All right. We'll now begin with an invocation and after that we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me and Police Department Chapel and Thomas Proust now will give the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the blessing of being in this community that you've just allowed us to live here and enjoy your creation, Lord. We're just, we're so grateful and thankful and we ask today that you would bless our nation, bless our county, bless our state and bless our community here, Lord. Protect us, put your hedge of protection around us and, Lord, we pray that our leaders here today, you'd give them the wisdom and knowledge and discernment to make the decisions that are necessary, Lord. Give them the, give them the quality to do that, Lord, to make the hard decisions for this community and do what's right and in all things I pray that they would glorify you. And as I close this in the tradition of my faith, I invite you to do the same. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Any changes tonight?
No changes, sir. I will bring one item under the city manager report and that's to authorize the staff to renegotiate with Base Pro.
Under?
Only to renegotiate. There is no, the contract will come back.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
He's got to speak right then and I think.
Can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay. One item to be added under the city manager report and that's to authorize the staff to renegotiate the contract with Base Pro and the solid waste and the contract will come back to you, to the commission for final approval. This is just to renegotiate.
Okay. So you're going to bring that up under city manager report though?
Yes, sir.
We'll give that authorization then. Okay. All right. Next item up, item 4A, we have a quick presentation from representative from the Florida County Managers Association. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Grebos. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Deland and I serve as a District Two Director for the Florida City and County Managers Association. District Two of FCCMA stretches from Volusia County north to Taylor County in the Big Bend region of the state. And on behalf of FCCMA, we are privileged to present to you tonight with a certificate celebrating New Smyrna Beach's 2021 year as their 100th year as a city-county manager form of government. It says, "Recognized as the International City and County Management Association," or ICMA. So for all who are not aware of what that means to be a city-county council manager form of government, basically it means that the council manager form of government was created to help separate the administration from direct political influence and establish merit-based practices within local government. It's modeled after a corporation's framework with voters who are like stockholders selecting a council or commission who's like the board of directors and who in turn appoint a manager, kind of like the CEO, to advise the council or commission and implement actions through ordinances and policies. In Florida, nearly 70% of all 411 cities, towns, villages operate under the city-county council manager form of government and 67 counties in the state, all but two are professionally managed. The city of New Smyrna Beach is recognized as a great example of the council manager form of government where you have a city commission that works together in a professional manner to make decisions and establish policies that are in the best interest of your stakeholders. New Smyrna Beach is fortunate to have an FCCMA and ICMA member leading your city and city manager, Khaled. Khaled is respected by professionals all around the country, state and beyond as an individual who maintains the highest integrity and ethics and always is willing to promote their community while helping those cities that may be needing their assistance. Khaled leads a staff of committed professionals to provide the highest quality staff and the highest quality life to the residents of New Smyrna Beach. So on behalf of FCCMA and all other council manager communities within our county and the state of Florida, we want to congratulate the city of New Smyrna Beach on this milestone achievement of being a council manager community for over 100 years. So I'll present the certificate and if I could get a picture, that'd be beautiful.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to grab a picture, gentlemen. All right. I really wish I'd thought to ask beforehand because we've been a city, I think, for over 250 years, right? We celebrated that a couple of years back. So what were we 100, what were you for the first 150 years?
You were not.
What's that?
I said, "You were not under the..."
We were not under that. Just made it up as they went, I guess. All right. Okay, next item up is public participation. This is your chance to address the commission on any item that's on your matter that is related to city business. Items under the consent agenda, so that's any items under six, or the administrative items, new business, item seven. Those items you would want to speak to now. There will not be a public participation opportunity during those items particularly. Anything under section eight, the second reading of public hearings, if you have comments on those or under, or for those items, you would speak to those at that time. We will have a chance to speak to those at that time. So, but exception to those, anything else on your heart and mind, you'd speak to it now. You will have three minutes and that will be timed up over there. Out of respect to your friends and colleagues and neighbors, I ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. My last request is, I know we're often passionate about issues. If you hear something you agree with or disagree with, just hold the applause, the booing of that. Let's keep it professional for everyone's sake. Makes my job easier mainly. So with that, I'll open it up for public participation. If you'd come forward to the podium and give your name and address, if you would, for the record.
Good evening. I'm Pam Isen. I live at 624 North Riverside Drive in the lovely town of New Smyrna Beach. My neighbor and I, Deb Exum, started on an adventure about 18 months ago to brand our neighborhood, the Riverside Garden District. And we have an agenda item tonight asking for some neighborhood watch lines. This project is 100% funded by our neighbors around Ronach to Riverside Drive to Wayne back to Faulkner and we just ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hello, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor. My name is Deb Exum. I live at 622 Faulkner Street and I am the co-chair for the Riverside Garden District. As most of you know, we've been before you before. We've worked diligently to pull together our neighborhood. We've met with city planning to establish parameters of what that neighborhood looks like. And after numerous meetings, we were able to establish that we were able to set our neighborhood parameters between Ronach and Wayne and Riverside and Faulkner, which is a very manageable area and true to our neighborhood. We've got about 40 homes there. The good news is that every single one of our neighbors is unanimous about this project. We've all been through a lot with COVID and we realized when we presented to you before, we had initially asked for funds from the city. And we all went through a lot. I know the city lost a lot of funding because of COVID and we got together as a group and decided that we would self-fund, that we would not ask the city for a dime to promote our branding initiative. And in doing that, we hope we set a precedent for other neighborhoods who may want to do the same thing. Where we're at now is we've designed a Riverside Garden District neighborhood watch sign. It's beautifully done. I believe Khaled's going to show it a little bit later in the meeting. He actually walked the neighborhood with us and had asked originally when we met with Khaled that these signs be 400 feet apart. They are, in many instances, more than that apart. It's quite a wide stretch of road. We only have nine signs that we want to erect. They've all been paid for and we hope that we have your support in this initiative. It's going to look beautiful and I've already had other neighborhoods approach me about doing something similar in their neighborhood. So we'd appreciate your support because we don't want any more delays and we're ready to get our signs in the ground. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Others for public participation. Don't be shy. I'm going to close it. There you go. Come on. If you'd like to speak after this gentleman, if you want to go ahead and come down towards the front, just for time's sake. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager. My name is Mario Garza and I own an apartment, Moon Tide. But my main concern tonight is deteriorating circumstances that we're facing at the marina, the city marina. I have been a tenant there since 2010 and have watched it really deteriorate in the last year, especially with the opening of the river deck and all the events that are sponsored during the weekend. Normally I would expect about, in a, in a building, a condominium building, which I live in, they usually designate about 62, 63% parking spots for the number of units, okay? Which I think was the original intent of the parking spots in front of the marina. That being 27 parking spots, that would line up to about 62% of the 46 slips that we have. I have eight grandkids and I'm always carting heavy fuel. I'm carting outboard motors, dinghies, food, drinks, and eight grandkids. So I think not having been able to park in front of the marina for the better part of this year already, and I hate to think what's going to happen in the summer, probably we can't even park within a mile, you know, probably when the summer comes and the crowds really hit. But I wanted to implore you that to consider dedicating sufficient parking spots, you know, for, for us to enjoy what we pay for. We not only pay for the marina, but I also pay taxes in New Smyrna Beach. And it's, it's necessary. I think it was meant originally to be designated only for marina parking. And I see that it's on the agenda in 7B and Tracy will get into more of the details. But I think if, if you really consider, I don't know what the, what the law has said, I mean, the law or the statutes say about providing parking for residents and for leaseholders, which I'm one, but I think the 62, 63% has to apply. If it applies to a building on the beach, why doesn't it apply here? Okay. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Come ahead.
Good evening. I live at 201, North Riverside, otherwise known as the marina. So I'm here just to make the point that parking is needed. And I'm going to give you an example. The example is this. So I came to the marina a little over a year ago. Not so long after that, my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer. So we've had several surgeries and initially it was not a big deal. We could park next to the boat. We could walk to the boat together. I could help her on the boat. Since river deck went in, now I can drop her off, let her stand, let her sit while I park, park two, three, four blocks away and walk back and then help her on the boat. Please consider 7B. Thank you.
Sir, may I have your first name or last name for the record?
Michael Parsons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord. My name is Nancy and I have been at the city marina since it reopened in 2006. Not always as a live aboard and if I just take my monthly lease of six... I know, I'm short. My lease of $617.51, that adds up to $103,741.68. I've got a long list here, but anyway, I'm going to try to cut it short and my nerves are getting to me. I am a live aboard. In addition to just my lease, I pay an extra 120, not just me, but everybody that is a live aboard, $125 a month plus electric extra. I don't want to add that up to the additional fee that I gave you, but it's a lot of money. If someone rents a house or an apartment, they expect to have convenient parking available when they get home. And since I am a live aboard, sometimes that's difficult to do. We know when there is a special event, which we expect to find troubles with parking and deal with it, but when it becomes a daily issue, something needs to be done. I have a partial thing that I wanted to read from the mayor to one of our people that sent in. "The issue isn't one of the volume of parking. It is one of convenience. We cannot possibly have everyone parking within a few feet of their destination at all times in our downtown." Being able to park immediately adjacent to the marina or the river deck is a luxury afforded by luck and timing, not by any vested right. I will ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you got to the city hall and found a sign saying you can no longer park at city hall, you have to park at the boat launch and walk to work and you walk to work, get there, realize you have forgotten your lunch and the key to the office and have to go back, would you be happy? I think something needs to be done with the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others for public participation? Yes, sir.
My name is Peter Richards.
Point that mic up towards you, if you would.
My name is Peter Richards. Is that right?
That's good.
1099 Clubhouse Boulevard. I'm concerned about the development on your trail, the water, electricity. Are we going to be able to handle it all because of so much development in the area? That's my concern. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any others? Okay. And I know there were, you heard there were questions asked, there were comments made. So this is our chance to listen. This is your chance to speak. And then the commission, you know, we, we try to go by the agenda, else we would have chaos. So we'll speak to those items that were brought up by the public. The commission will each have a chance to speak on that item. And then other items, miscellaneous items, we can speak to them at, during mayor and commission comments, so. All right. Seeing no others, we will close public participation. Thank you all for participating. The next item is the consent agenda. There are 11 items on that consent agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to remove anything? We'll begin with the Vice Mayor.
I have nothing to pull, sir.
Nothing to pull. That's right. Nothing to pull from the Vice Mayor. Commissioner McGurk?
Nope.
Commissioner Hartman?
Nothing.
Commissioner Colode?
Nothing.
No items to pull. I also have no items to pull and we should probably mark this down in our 100-year history as well. Do you have, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
SAGA.
All right. 11 items, items A through K, a motion to approve in a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, 7A, City Manager, report on that.
Yes, Mayor. I had the pleasure of working with Deb Exum and Pam Isen, representing the Riverside Garden Districts. And that is bounded, as they mentioned in their public speaking, by Wayne Avenue on the north, Faulkner on the west and Riverside on the east and then Ronach on the south. Basically, they came up with this design on the neighborhood watch sign, as you could see on the screen. It's a beautiful sign. I've actually seen the colors in actuality and it really looks awesome. We walked the area with them. The map, it shows 10 signs, but actually it's nine signs. There is one actually on a private property. There is two existing signs right now, neighborhood watch signs. They will be replaced by the new design. There is signs on Faulkner, signs on Wayne, signs on Riverside and then signs on Ronach Lane. We've been working with them for the last few months. They, as they mentioned, they would pay for all the signs and the accesses. The only thing the city is providing is in-kind services of installing the signs within the right of way. Staff have reviewed it, looked at it, and we are recommending approval of these nine signs to be installed by the city, provided by the Riverside Garden and be installed within the right of way. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay. One question really quick, Chief. Any, any positive, neutral, any, anything to consider from your perspective on this? I imagine it can only be positive, but for you, Chief Goff. No? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Colode?
Maintenance of the signs. If one gets damaged or if the lettering goes bad, who will be responsible for correcting that?
Well, since they are on public right of way, assuming right now it would be the city's responsibility. However, they have mentioned that if, in, in the future, and this time probably would last, my assumption would be at least 15 years for now. They, they're good material, good type of lettering and paint, but right now it's on the right of way. The city would, would actually take responsibility of the maintenance.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Could we, does it have to be that way? Could we say that we aren't going to maintain? Basically, if it becomes an issue, lettering, where they can either pay to replace them or we just would take them out if we didn't want to take on that burden? Yeah, we could. Okay. All right. No other questions, don't have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Had a motion to approve as presented in a second. No other discussion? City Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Item 7B, request for city marina parking designation. Numerous public comments on it. I know there were others that were here also on this item that did not speak and we appreciate their respect of our time. Khaled, do you have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor. We have the city marina manager. She will go over her staff reports and then we'll, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Good evening. As Khaled mentioned, my name is Tracy Berger. I'm the manager of the marina as of October of last year, so this is my first commission meeting, so go easy on me.
Jumping in the deep end.
Yes. So tonight I'm here to share with you a proposal that I worked on with Khaled and our chief and our parking ambassadors to come up with some middle ground solution for the issue that Mr. Garza spoke about, as well as some of the other tenants at the marina. As you guys know, the city is certainly growing and we're feeling, you know, some of those, those pain points. And one of them is sort of been exacerbated by the opening of the River Deck Marina with patrons parking typically where marina tenants would park and leaseholders, as well as the staff of the River Deck Marina. And then layering onto that, the county annex project has shifted parking down that road as well where it used to be on the canal side. So what we're asking for is to consider designating 15 parking spaces for marina use only. One of those would be for staff. We are seven days a week and with the staff on site, so it's very challenging for the, those folks to leave the building, run an errand, grab lunch and then try to come back and find a place to park. We also need, you know, an ADA spot that needs to be changed a little bit from what we have today. We're also asking for a loading space for 15-minute loading, which will help people like Mr. Garza with his grandkids, his groceries, his cases of beer, all that fun stuff, that they'll be able to unload easily and then move to parking. In addition to that, Ms. Nancy Yott spoke about the live aboard situation. We have seven live aboard slips with 12 people that live aboard those vessels with one, at least one car for the singles and two cars for the couples that live on those vessels. And again, they're living there full-time. As Dr. Mike mentioned, he and his wife live aboard and come home late at night and have trouble finding a place to park. So, you know, all the background, we're really asking for you to consider designating some, some parking. We would stencil the spaces. We would leverage the city parking management system by registering the vehicles and plates so that it will be easier to sort of manage who should be there and who shouldn't be there. And lastly, it is a practice of our sister marinas in Daytona and Titusville to provide dedicated parking to marina tenants. So again, we're not setting anything new from that standpoint, but just following on what is typical in a lease marina situation. So I'll leave it there and any, any questions or deeper dive into any of the information that I've shared with you guys?
I'm, I'm sure we'll have some questions. Comments, questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Certainly the county moving their building closer to the city marina added some problems and the river deck. Is this a consistent problem through the entire week or does this get, or is this prob, more of a problem during weekends and holidays?
From what I've observed, it has been consistent during the week as well. And that starts at 8:00 in the morning. Again, I'm on site at the marina with staff parking from the river deck, parking in front of the marina and walking to work. You can see their shirts are labeled, they're headed to work. And that starts, you know, first thing in the morning with the kitchen staff. And the issue with that is they're there all day, whereas a patron will at least come in, have a meal, come back and leave and rotate the spaces, but the staff is consistently there. So...
Well, I appreciate that observation. I think that plants the seed for a future conversation at another time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So the question is brought up about enforcement and the concern was that since the parking ambassadors only work during, usually during the daylight hours, would there be enforcement after hours? Chief, I'm sure that if there was a problem or an issue that we would handle that on an off-duty or after-hour kind of process?
Yes, sir. The officers will handle everything after the parking ambassadors are done for the day.
Okay. That's all I have. Sorry. Yes, Commissioner Colode?
Have you ever spoke with the management at the river deck?
Multiple times.
And what is their response?
That they have informed their staff not to park there, that they have signage for their staff that says not to park there. And they've even offered that they would reprimand their staff for parking there, but then it becomes my job to call them every morning and say, "You have staff parked in front of the marina."
Yeah, that shouldn't be your job.
Yep. But yes, numerous...
So basically they've given you lip service.
Numerous times.
Okay.
Yep. And I, I think they intend... Again, I'm on-site at the Marina with staff parking from the River Deck, parking in front of the Marina, and walking to work. You can see their shirts are labeled, they're headed to work. And that starts, you know, first thing in the morning with the kitchen staff. And the issue with that is they're there all day, whereas a patron will at least come in, have a meal, come back and leave, and rotate the spaces. But the staff is consistently there. So...
Well, I appreciate that observation. I think that plants the seed for a future conversation at another time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So the question is brought up about enforcement, and the concern was that since the parking ambassadors only work during, usually during the daylight hours, would there be enforcement after hours? Chief, I'm sure that if there was a problem or an issue, that we would handle that on an off-duty or after-hour kind of process?
Yes, sir. The officers will handle everything after the parking ambassadors are done for the day.
Okay. That's all I have, sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Clody.
Have you ever spoke with the management at the River Deck?
Multiple times.
And what is their response?
That they have informed their staff not to park there, that they have signage for their staff that says not to park there, and they've even offered that they would reprimand their staff for parking there. But then it becomes my job to call them every morning and say, "You have staff parked in front of the Marina."
Yeah, that shouldn't be your job.
Yep. But yes, numerous...
So basically, they've given you lip service?
Numerous times.
Okay.
Yep. And I think they intend, their intention is right, but the enforcement is lacking because they would have to do the same thing.
Correct.
Walk over and know which cars are staff and which are not. It just becomes difficult to manage.
It's a problem we have elsewhere in town, where we have, our parking standards are such that we really don't make people provide enough parking, and we allow exemptions for this, exemptions for that. So I can see why this is a more current problem. I know with the restaurant that used to be in the back there, they had a big gravel lot, and they just kind of stuffed all the vehicles in there. I do think that the people who live there do deserve some protection for the spaces. They're not in their lease, that they be provided, but practically speaking, because of our total lack of available parking, there should be some spaces set aside. I don't agree with twelve spaces. I would love to see that cut in half. Staff is fine, especially if you have somebody that has to come in after hours. Loading zone would certainly help out also, but I myself would like to see the number of spaces for the tenants reduced to six or seven.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, comment? Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Both. Let me cut to the chase. The parking situation is now exacerbated by the River Deck, wants the Dolphin View, wants the Sea Harvest. Does anyone recall valet parking at the other two older venues?
No.
Okay, so that, regardless, is part of the problem because they've increased their occupancy, I assume. And River Deck, if anybody knows of Ocean Deck, they probably, I hear they love the food. So they're going to park all those spots everywhere available. They're going to park down Riverside. They may even park in the Brandon Center parking lot when they can. It's unfortunate. If I owned a boat, I would love to have a car parked, honestly, have my car as close as possible, but in many marinas, it's not possible. There's all different kinds of arrangements. I don't believe parking spots have ever been assigned and granted to slip owners. And historically, unless someone could tell me otherwise, I believe it's public parking, which puts the people at the Marina at a disadvantage. I would like to suggest that, at the very least, they have a loading zone for provisions, for supplies, and for just getting their guests and themselves on or off their vessels. That, and employee parking, and handicap parking, but I cannot see taking away from the inventory of public parking. That's my biggest problem, because we're at a critical mass. Our city manager's looking to buy parking everywhere, right? We are. And I appreciate your hard work, and if it passes, the hard work of people going to have to monitor those spots.
Right.
So I would prefer that we don't assign parking to the Marina slips. Unfortunately, I know it's not a popular decision, but I think it's the right one. Again, it's always been public parking. So hopefully Marina slip owners have an advantage, because like New Yorkers, they can sometimes go out and move their car. They have many different opportunities to move their car back into a spot that's close by, and actually hold on to those spots longer than someone eating at River Deck. I've noticed we've reached a critical mass in the city, gentlemen. I don't know how we're going to answer it. We can't find enough surface parking. We don't have a place to build, or money to build a garage. But at the same time, I can't see reducing the inventory of public spots.
Okay.
Thank you for abiding me.
All right. A couple of questions, if you would. When the employees for the Marina, do they come and go often through the day, or is it pretty much they're there for their shift, and they maybe walk downtown or eat lunch on-site? Like, what kind of volume are they coming and going?
During the week, it's, there's two of us on staff, so there's more time. On the weekend, we have one person on staff, and it's very difficult for them to jump out and do anything besides, you know, be there for the duration of their shift.
Yeah. But just in an average shift, Monday through Friday, I guess I'm saying, once you get there outside of lunch, like, is there, are there things you, are you constantly kind of leaving the site to go do other things, or you primarily, would you say, own the site?
The dock attendants are typically there.
Okay.
And as the Marina manager, I went and bought plants at Lenley's today. I go to City Hall and drop things off.
Right.
I drive around town for a number, a number of different tasks.
Got it. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, and come back. Kala, the Votran lot, I presume, is county-controlled completely? We don't have any say in that, that lot that's right there on the corner of Sam's?
We don't have any control.
Okay. Because there are some parking spots in there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are those often, do you observe, do you observe, are those full? Has that dynamic changed with this new situation?
Honestly, Mayor, I have not paid attention to that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Is anybody else, you work at City Hall, has any notice?
You know, I'm going to actually reach out to the county and see if we could put some signs to show that it's public parking. Because I think what's happening too, a lot of people don't realize that it's a public parking because they see the shut-its vehicles parked there.
Yeah.
So maybe if we put some signs that say it's public parking, maybe that would make people, more people to park there.
Yeah.
The other suggestions that I would like to make on this one, maybe possibly, we could do, as a trial and error with this parking, to designate it as a City Marina parking, and give it a try for six months, and then see, you know, what's happened within the six months, and then come back with you with a report.
Yeah. Okay. Couple of the questions. So one individual mentioned a $617.51 lease, and then another $125 a month. I assume it's kind of a per-foot thing, right? Is it?
It is, yeah.
Okay. But if we assume that's roughly an average, how does that compare? And I know you sent the data over earlier, but just for public's knowledge, how does that compare to marinas that you surveyed earlier?
I would say we're really on par with the Halifax Marina in Daytona, as far as our footage rates and our live-aboard rate is actually, theirs is $90 a month, and ours is $125 a month, so we're actually a little bit higher from the live-aboard standpoint. But we are, I would say, in the level market with the rest of the marinas in the area. As you get further south, of course, it gets more expensive.
Okay. Yeah, that was the, that was the data I had looked at. Here it is, I just found it. So I had just noticed, it looked like we were, I mean, I see rates on here, $3, $2.10 at St. Augustine, $1.90. These are the transient rates, I assume, and we're at 1...
170.
We're at 170.
Mm-hmm.
So it looked like we were on the bottom of that list. Halifax Harbor is 170. Basically, there's no one lower than us that we surveyed, but there are numerous people higher than us.
This is true.
Yeah. And then for the annual, the same thing. We're at 10.30, and Halifax Harbor is at 10, but everything else, well, there's a few that are lower. I'll be corrected, Titusville and Bow Works. So if you annualize that, and Marina, do they pay property taxes there? I know if they pay, if they own property elsewhere, they do, of course, and one gentleman spoke to that, but if they're just living in the Marina, do they pay property taxes at all?
No property tax, but they do pay sales tax.
They pay sales tax, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we all do. Okay. Okay. And nowhere in any lease or anything has, have we ever implied or insinuated that it was a vested right that they have that, that the parking came with the slip?
No, sir.
To your knowledge?
In fact, it is the opposite of that. It says in writing...
It explicitly states that it's not.
It's not guaranteed.
Yeah.
Parking is not guaranteed.
All right. So my opinion is this, and you heard an email that I had sent earlier, and I don't remember who that was that I replied to, but my sentiment is this, and I've shared with the city manager, you know, I think that parking, you know, this is waterfront property that folks are able to live in, and I'm thankful that it's there and that they're able to live in it at relatively reasonable rates, cheaper than, or at least as inexpensive as any other Marina that we surveyed, some of which provide parking, some of which do not. So, but much cheaper than any other waterfront property in the district. If you go up and down Riverside Drive, find me waterfront property for that price, and you won't. And if you do, it includes property taxes, which are probably about this much. So I'm struggling with giving more vested rights to parking, which is at a premium, as my Commissioner has said, my Vice Mayor has said. I just, I'm struggling with that. I'm not saying there's not a parking problem. I'm just saying I don't think this is the right solution. So a couple of things that I have thrown out, I could absolutely go for a loading-unloading zone. I'd agree to that from the very beginning. I would even be okay designating two spots as loading-unloading zones for the Marina specifically. I believe the staff parking, if they're not coming and going that often, I think staff parking, they could use the loading and unloading if you bring plants back or hardware, whatever it is. So I think the staff parking could be designated somewhere a little further away, maybe even in that county lot, but if not, even over, you know, across from Old Fort Park, it's still easy walking distance, and they're only coming once or twice per day. And then outside of that, you know, to me, it's a premium upgrade. If you want a slip that includes vested parking, this is the rate. If you want a slip that includes public parking, this is the rate. That's how I would handle it. That's how every other business owner in this room would handle it, if it were their business, and this is our business. So that's what I, that's how I think, but I'm curious the rest of the Commission.
So just for clarification, you would say to create a tier where you can pay a rate for just the boat slip, or you can pay an extra slip, I mean, a parking spot too?
Yeah.
Okay.
So an upgrade, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. So this is, in my, this is tough. This is not an easy fix. The way it has been in the past, we've not had a parking problem. Due to some things out of our control, we have a parking problem. I think it's a valid point, when you charge somebody for a specific thing, I think it's unreasonable, I don't think it's unreasonable for them to be able to have access to what they're paying for. And in this case, it's, I think that a valid point is made that when you need to carry coolers and you need to carry in gas, it's not practical, it's not reasonable to assume someone can walk a couple of blocks with that kind of weight. So I absolutely agree with some loading and unloading zones. That's a no-brainer.
Just turn it over. Just turn your pack over, it may be losing signal there.
As for staff parking, you know, I'm off for at least one or two spots. I don't disagree with what has been said, but it's raining, it's storming afternoon, thunderstorms, you need to get from someplace to your building, it's your work. I think it's reasonable to provide at least some close proximity parking for the job. As for parking spaces for the slips, I'm open to that discussion. I agree with Commissioner Clody that we need to make that at a minimum. I'd also look to maybe try this out for weekends and holidays, so start the loading zones, and then have some parking reserved, maybe three or four spots during weekends and holidays. I just, what I think is valid is, we charge an individual to use a specific service, which they're going to need to drive to. To deny them and just say, "Well, that's your problem, there's no parking," yeah, that's one, there's nothing wrong with that. But I think it's valid when someone says, "Hey, you're charging me this, it's not realistic for me to walk blocks." I can, there's a lot of that conversation that I can get further into. The issue on the parking, this is not private businesses making a decision to operate and compete for X amount of public parking spots. And you, as a consumer, deciding, "I'm going to go into downtown Canal Street for a restaurant, or maybe one or two different ones," I look at that as a different problem. You know, we create, we charge someone for the ability to park their boat there, and then we will run an event, which will create crowds that they can't get to, get access to their boat. So what this has also brought my, brought my attention to is, I think, Mayor, you hit on it, the rates, and in my opinion, non-resident people, I think it's 20 non-resident and six resident. Anyway, the information I sent, that's what I saw. That concerns me. I think that should be flip-flopped. I think somehow we need to have residents prioritize over non-residents. I imagine it's difficult, if you would have a list, but the rates, I think, need to improve. I compared us to St. Augustine, I thought we were significantly below St. Augustine. So I think we need to be a little more competitive. We're not Daytona. I think we're a lot better than Daytona. And I certainly compare us with St. Augustine in desirability, if not even above St. Augustine. So I've covered a bunch of things here, simply to summarize and make it clear, I'm definitely for loading zones. I'm off for one or two employee spots for parking, and I'm open on the discussion of a couple of parking spaces.
Yeah, my concern, I'll come back to you. My concern on the couple of spots or six spots, I mean, really, anything less than, you know, somewhere in that 60% number that was mentioned, I mean, there's probably science to that. It's probably a valid number of, as far as the ratio, really, at that point, just kind of agitating the problem to me. I mean, we're just going to be back here in a few months with them saying, "Hey, five isn't enough, we need 10. 10 isn't enough, we need 20." So I, you know, that's my, if we're going to, if that's the direction we're going to go, I'd like to just say, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to do that, and we can adjust the rate or whatever," but so...
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it opens up that can if we go down that road. We're going to constantly be asked.
It's like me eating dessert, when I say, "No, just a little bit, but I really intend to go back and get five refills. I just feel better about getting a little at a time. That's really all we're going to do." Commissioner Clody.
A question.
Yes, sir.
How often do they pick up the trash in the dumpster?
On the normal weekly, bi-weekly schedule, we have...
I don't understand.
We, I'm sorry. We, they picked up today, so we have a dumpster pickup and a recycling bins that they pick up on a weekly basis.
So once a week?
I believe so, sir, yes.
Okay.
I have to check that.
First of all, I think...
It's at least once, maybe twice.
We should move the staff parking over to the front of that dumpster location. That way, it won't take away from any parking that we have out on the street right now. I do understand the concerns. However, they all rented the spaces without any, any parking really set aside. The city has itself, through the parking standards, made the matter worse. I could go for six parking spaces for a six-month trial basis. My biggest fear is, I don't want to drive past there and find these spaces open because the residents have parked in other spaces. So if we do go forward with this, that's one thing that I would really watch as I go past there every day. I don't want to see a bunch of empty spaces out there.
So I've heard, I think, universal agreement, don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, universal agreement on the loading zone space or spaces and some staff parking, and I've heard some ideas on where that could be, maybe more efficient. I don't think it's our job to tell you exactly where to put it, but I think we've given you some things to think about. You made some valid points about weather, and I always forget that it's a massive downpour every afternoon in Florida over the summer. So just say to, if we want to proceed with this item to the motion maker, we had universal agreement on those, might be worth peeling those items off, seeing if we can get that progressed, and then, you know, just consider this as two separate, but that's just a suggestion, or have an invitation for a motion on this item, if you know what a comment.
Well... Well, I'll make a motion that we have an unloading/unloading zone, and we have two spots for employees.
Okay. Is that one, one space for the unloading/unloading zone, or two, or?
You know, I'm gonna let staff decide how big and where that loading zone should be.
Okay.
They're more familiar with how that should work out.
May I comment to that?
Sure.
In the spirit of how we came to this, I think that one staff is enough, because, like I said, I am usually the one running the errands, and we have another attendant there, and then they're there by themselves on the weekends. So, one is adequate, from that standpoint.
Okay. So, my motion is for one staff parking spot and for an unloading/unloading zone...
Determined by staff.
Determined by staff, and also the time.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second for discussion.
Second, go ahead.
Commissioner, would you be willing to add one ADA compliance spot?
Okay, you throw me, we haven't discussed that. I'm not aware if there's a problem or not. Is there a need for an ADA compliance spot?
She mentioned it briefly, but do you mind just...
Sure, I can elaborate on that. We currently have an ADA spot, but it needs to be moved for safety issues, where it's, where it is now, there's a large drain right next to it. So, we're proposing that we move that ADA spot over and replace that spot with the loading, loading space.
So, I don't think I need that in my motion. That's just a staff...
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, Tracy, we're thinking about the parking spot where the handicap is, that would be the loading/unloading zone, and then the one to the north, that would be the new handicap, so it's away from where the drainage is.
Yeah.
That's right.
You all can read that out.
And that's a perfect example. It's not in my motion. I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstate and then be subjected to too much detail, so...
So, for clarity, the motion was one staff parking spot, a loading/unloading zone, and then I think the other operational issues, you all can, we certainly won't have the right ADA spot, so you seconded that motion.
So, ultimately, Commissioner, your issue will be addressed, and...
Yes, I'll second your motion.
All right, I had a motion and a second. Go ahead, comment.
No.
No?
No, I can't support that. I... So, how many total spots are we talking? Three?
For the unloading/unloading zone and the staff parking spot?
Yeah.
I'm gonna let staff determine that, but I would assume roughly three.
And are we gonna revisit it again in six months, or you just, that's it, you're done?
I don't have any, if it needs to come back before us, I have no problem revisiting it. I don't have a problem revisiting it later with a, with another motion. I'm simply going to address, I'm making a motion to address part of it, and then another motion can be made later for any parking spaces. I just didn't want the whole thing to get convoluted, that's why I made the motion as I did.
There was, there was pretty broad agreement on the issues he brought up, so it felt like that could go forward, and then we can talk about the other designated parking, because it seemed like that was a little more, a little more variability there. So, I think that's why we had broken it apart.
Okay.
Okay. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on the side? Anybody wanna tackle the other spaces?
Gentlemen, we're such so short in parking spots in the whole city. I would love to consider a specially designed space for them to go, but it's, all the cities are different. Some provide transportation, some tell you to go to the parking garage down the block, some have paid parking spots. I wish we had it for them, but, you know, people that go to Old Fort Park, they've said it themselves, people that go to the farmer's market, art shows, everybody's using the spots. So, they were, they were originally assigned public. I feel bad that they have to walk, but I definitely want a loading zone, so they can at least get out of the car comfortably, take their time, get the provisions...
Yeah.
And use it. I don't think staff would shoot them away.
Yeah, we did the loading zone, so we've done that. Loading zone, staff parking is done. Last motion. All right, other comments on this? Yes, sir.
Yeah, but my concern, it, is we're providing parking for the restaurant, for their employees, which they should have done on-site. The biggest problem is, is they do valet parking only. You can't park on their lot. Their whole lot is valet parking, and they only valet on their lot. So, they're not valeting across the street, they're not valeting over to the Orange County, or to the county's parking lot, or our parking lot. They're valeting on their lot, where their employees should be parking, and/or where the patrons should be parking. So, I think that's the problem. So, I'd be in favor of creating at least three additional parking spots for residents. You have seven people who live there year-round. If you're renting up an apartment or something, and you're able to come home, and then all of a sudden you can't, because your neighbor or somebody down the street is now parking in your driveway, I mean, that's wrong. So, you know, I certainly support their issue, and I think it needs to be monitored and evaluated, and then brought back to us six months from now with some definitive answers, like, you know, we've solved the parking, the employee parking issue, you know, we were able to manage with the ones we, slots we have, or, you know, something along that line. And I think in her previous email, she's also gonna look at a rate study, so at that point in time, we could look at maybe charging premiums for designated parking spots. But at this time, parking and, or loading and unloading and employees, staff, you know, that gives you two slots. I agree with Commissioner Colodey, I think six should be the minimum that we designate over there for those residents. You know, I lived there 15 years ago, and there wasn't a parking issue, because there wasn't all, all of the amenities that were downtown, there wasn't all of that that was going on downtown. We never had a problem over there, parking over there before.
All right.
So, you know, I just, I just think, and if, and if it's not working out six months from now, then we can, you know, stencil over all of them, it doesn't matter. So, I just think one or two parking spots is not the answer.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment on that. I agree with you to the extent that one of my pet peeves is that the businesses have not controlled where their employees park. However, and I think that extends citywide.
Yes.
One of, I think, our parking problems is, as holistically, is that we have, we have tried too hard to solve it, which in the long run exacerbated the problem. If we reserve spots for the Marina...
Uh, hang on a minute. We gotta have the discussion up here. I'm gonna ask you all, just, we're talking, we had a chance to listen to public participation, this is a business meeting, you gotta, you gotta treat it as such, so I can hear the commissioners. Thank you.
So, while I agree with you, I have a concern that if we accept this condition, that's gonna lead to other circumstances around the city where people are gonna say, "Wait a second, you need to reserve parking for me, where I'm parking in a public lot, for example, on Flagler, and paying for something." So, I think the whole employee issue is the key, where the employees park, I think, is key here, and I think it's part of a bigger discussion. Ultimately, I don't think we're gonna be able to avoid having some spaces for the Marina. I'm just cautious to jump into it, because I think it's part of a bigger discussion, and I don't mind readdressing this issue if we can hash it out a little bit when you come back with a rate study or a recommendation, because I think these two issues that I raised, the rates and non-citizen, non-residents getting, having a very large majority of the slips here, when I assume we have heard, we have a very long waiting list, I'm sure of a lot of residents. I think there's a lot of tweaking we can do here. But I just, before I commit to the slips, or not the slips, the parking spots, I wanna make sure we're not gonna create a problem in another part of the city. I wanna kind of be able to feel our way through that a little more. That's why I was willing to go to the extent I did tonight. So, I'm willing to rehear this issue, talk about it a little more, but I just don't wanna jump into it. And if we do it for six months, I think, once we go down this road, we're going down this road. So, I agree with what the mayor said. I just wanna tread carefully before we overcommit. That's my concern.
Okay.
Gentlemen, please don't forget.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just short, we're desperately looking to buy land for spots, and we just bought some, but now we're going to deplete that inventory by letting it for a single use. I definitely feel for Marina residents, but at this point, we're gonna have to rethink it. I don't wanna give undue advantage to another venue. It seems that, you know, I turn onto Riverside, and I see cars parked all along the, all along the park, and I know where they all went, but to take away public parking is, to me, a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Colodey?
Well, I would like to move this along, and I'm willing to make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion that for a six-month trial period, that we designate four parking spaces for use by the Marina. This is no way a guarantee that it will extend more than six months. It's no way a guarantee that they won't be charged for them in the future, but it'll at least give some relief at this point. It's a problem caused by our ordinances in how we've allowed people to put buildings up and not have parking. It's not the fault of the Marina people. I don't think we're giving them any special benefits. I just think we're giving them a relief that we've had a part of creating. That's my motion.
Okay. That was a motion, just for clarity, four, hang on, four spaces for a six-month trial period?
Yes.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Did we not have a motion prior?
So, that, that motion was already voted on? So, that was the motion to create the staff parking and the spaces, and that has passed? So, those are created. So, we have the staff parking and the loading zone, that we all approved.
Thank you. I didn't realize we separated them.
Yeah, so we separated them, because it was pretty much universal, with the exception of one no vote, but anyway, broad agreement, and so now, separate issue is, this motion has been made and seconded it to create four designated spaces for the Marina for a six-month trial period. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
No.
Mayor Owen?
No. All right. Item is brewed for a six-month trial period, four spaces. Okay, thank you very much. Separately, Kelly, I'm definitely interested in new leadership, taking a look at the, at the rates that we're charging, for sure.
Yes, we've already talked about that.
Thank you. All right, item 8A, this is a public hearing for the removal of some trees, six dead or diseased trees, and a couple of historic trees. Assistant City Manager Brian, do you have a report, please?
Yes, I do. Kelly, if you could please start by pulling up Exhibit A, the location map. This is a request by Sugar Mill Partners for approval to remove eight historic trees on the site of the Rolling Hills Plan Unit Development, consisting of six dead or dying trees and two healthy live oak trees. The 110-acre undeveloped property is generally located east of the intersection of Sugar Mill Drive and Clubhouse Boulevard, as shown here on the map. The Rolling Hills PUD agreement was approved by the City Commission in 2018. That agreement allows a maximum of 196 single-family homes with a minimum lot width of 60 feet and depth of 100 feet. Final subdivision plans are not approved and have been submitted and reviewed by city staff several times over the past two years. A key remaining issue is the proposed removal of historic trees on the property. Kelly, if you could please go to Exhibit F, the tree exhibit. This property contains a total of 62 historic trees, all of which were identified as live oaks in the Arborist report, and they're shown on the tree exhibit that Kelly's gonna pull up here. The applicant's proposing to preserve 54 of these 62 historic trees and to remove two healthy historic trees and six dead or diseased. The two healthy historic trees proposed for removal are 40 inches and 41 inches in diameter, and these are highlighted in pink on the map. Takes a little time for that to generate a big file. The dead and diseased historic trees range from 38 inches up to 51 inches, and there's also photos of these eight trees in the staff report. So, as the commission may recall, in 2019, Ordinance 9-19 established criteria for removal of historic trees. That exempted development applications that were received prior to the effective date of that ordinance in June of 2019. That's important in this case, because the final plat application and PUD agreement for Rolling Hills was received in September of 2018. Therefore, this application for historic tree removal is exempt from Ordinance 9-19. So, we are applying the previous rules that were in place at the time. So, the applicant recently, recently performed a tree survey and has redesigned the subdivision layout, which reduced the lot count from that 196-unit maximum to a current total of 179 lots. The Arbor Report identifies the six trees as being dead or diseased, as having a likelihood of failure as probable. The two healthy trees proposed for removal are located within proposed street right-of-ways. Designing the street network around these trees is possible, but not without either impacting a number of other healthy historic trees that are currently shown to be preserved, or significantly reducing the area of the property that could be developed. So, based on the criteria that was in place prior to Ordinance 9-19, staff recommends approval of the proposed removal of the eight historic trees. And let me just, it's hard to identify here, but, let's see if I can get my pointer working here. Location of the two to be removed, one is right here, near the entrance off of Mooneeheim. It's in the middle of the road, or what's the proposed road. The second one is at this location here, kind of at, leading to this cul-de-sac. So, between the preservation of the wetlands that are on-site, which are these gray areas in here, and the historic trees, we felt like this applicant did a good job of working with staff. We had a lot of back and forth on the layout to reach the point where 54 of the historic trees would be preserved, and again, the eight to be removed, six dead, two are living. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing, let's just hear from the public first. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Oops. Hi. I feel like I'm in a masquerade party. For the record, first of all, my name's Glenn Storch, and it's nice to see everybody again. I don't get to see you too much.
Yeah, you gotta pull it out.
Closer, how's that?
That's better.
All right, it's nice to see everybody again. I don't see many people lately. So, this has been around, though, as you can imagine, for two and a half years. This has been around for two and a half years. So, when this was originally approved, it was approved for 196 units, and in fact, it was approved, it was, it was, it was approved... Yeah, that is better. Thank you very much. It was, there we go.
Now, you got him mobile. He's gonna, he's gonna turn into courtroom attorney here.
Or game show host.
Yeah.
All right, it was, it was approved for the purpose, I mean, don't forget, this was approved with support of Sugar Mill HOA and Sugar Mill Golf Course, because if you recall, this was a site, a project that was gonna go around next to the golf course. And so, that's why this is, this was so important to Sugar Mill. And on top of that, as you can see, we preserved a great deal of the area when we were looking at this, trying to make this something special, trying to make this where you had a lot of vegetation on site, a lot of tree preservation, et cetera. And so, we did this the right way when we were walking through this process. Yes, we have spent two and a half years in subdivision review. It's, it's not the staff's fault. The staff has done a very thorough job on this case. There have been issues that we have to look at... There have been issues that we have to look at. And obviously, as Brian has indicated, we have come back with a number of different plans to try and deal with these issues, to make this work. And so that's, and there's also the county issue as far as the access in the Moonee Ham. We had to resolve that as well. So, but it's been a two-and-a-half-year review to try and come up with something that gives us the opportunity to save as many of the 62 trees as possible. So, and then... So as Brian has indicated, this is a fairly recent arborist report as well. We did a new tree survey just in case. And the tree survey has indicated that there are six trees that are dying that have been determined to be too deteriorated, to be near a structure or where people may congregate. So I don't think there's any issues as far as that is concerned. The city staff actually inspected all the trees on-site in person. And don't forget, when we're doing trees, when we're taking trees out, we're not losing trees in the city. These trees will be mitigated. Don't forget the fact that when we ask for the removal of a tree, the area will actually result in a number of other trees planted in the city, either on this site or by paying into the fund, other sites in the city. So this will still be a tree city. And this site, as you can imagine, with all of these trees on the site, with the 62 historic trees, I mean, the 54 historic trees on the site, plus all the vegetation that we preserved, will be a very lush area. So as to the design, we have worked with staff for a while, working back and forth. We've moved stormwater areas around. We have moved roads around. We've moved the infrastructure around, trying to find that actual best... Trying to find a way that we don't have to come before you to ask for anything, as you can imagine. That's the last thing I want to do, is ask to remove an historic tree. In this case, because of the full number of trees we've had, it's been difficult. And we've come to an conclusion, even though we've removed a lot of lots on the site, there's not a whole lot else we can do. And more importantly, this is the picture of some of the trees that will have to be removed. As you can, as we've indicated, in order to meet this criteria, in order to meet the staff's criteria, to give a recommendation of approval, we have 17 less lots than were previously designed for the site. That's, you know, that's well over a half million dollars, as you can imagine, just in lots alone. But the bottom line is, this is what it takes to get us to the point where it is the absolute, the absolute maximum that we can do to solve the problem. So, and I think it's important to indicate also that staff indicated that the two healthy trees that we've asked for removal, those are in the infrastructure itself. And while we've moved the infrastructure and moved the roadways around as much as we can before, if we do it again, you're looking at, in fact, impacting other healthy historic trees that we are saving. So the idea again is working with staff. We have come to an conclusion, this is the absolute maximum we can do to get to a point where we can save as many trees as possible. Per staff, the request is a practical solution that preserves as many trees as possible while maintaining and allowing the subdivision plan, the PUD itself. Staff has recommended approval. Obviously, we have our engineer who has worked on this for the past two and a half years. We have the owner here. If you have any questions at all as to things we could do better, I think staff has really covered this. They've done a great job of, I shouldn't say making us solve the problem, but certainly pushing us to the, as far as possible, to get to a point where we have now minimized the project and maximize the trees.
Okay.
All right. Any questions?
So let's see if anybody else in the public wants to speak, and then we'll get to questions or comments. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item only? Seeing no other members in the public. All right. We'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments from the commission? Do we have a motion on this item? No motions, no comments. We're just going to pretend it doesn't exist.
Motion to approve 1-21 and accept staff's approval.
All right. Second, a motion to approve, per staff's recommendation, and a second for discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner McGurk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make the comment. I was never, I never liked this project. I was never, I never thought it was consistent with the area. Had a problem with it for a lot of reasons. However, I have to say, I'm going to vote yes tonight because when I read in staff's report that they have saved 54 out of 62 historic trees, that's a darn good job. And I've heard staff's report. I believe the applicant worked as hard as they can in making sure we got the best we can under the circumstances. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Commissioner Clodie, go ahead.
I've taken a close look at the plans. I think they've done a pretty good job of cutting down the number, bad thing to say, about lessening the impact on the historic trees. I do not see a viable alternative to cutting down tree number 50, but I do for 52. So I can't support taking down both of those trees. Dead trees, dead and dying is fine, but I can't support it if the tree number 58 is going to go.
Brian was, so you can't, you don't want which tree to go, 58 or which one?
Tree number 58 is located on the side of a right-of-way along the curb line of a cul-de-sac that services maybe 12 homes. I think that with the loss of perhaps another lot, that they could shift that road over somewhat and save that tree. We really like our historic trees. So I can't see taking that one down because I think there's a viable alternative to shifting the road somewhat. Tree number 50, I don't see a viable alternative.
Kelly, could you just please pull up the tree exhibit again? That's at Exhibit F of the staff report. We can show this, zoom in on that area and see what...
So it was the one, not the one near the entrance, it was the one deeper?
That's correct. It's the one, Tree Exhibit is called.
Yeah.
Exhibit F, Tree Exhibit.
Take a minute to load unless it's still, unless it's still in memory. Brian, do you have any comments on that, just from memory and staff report? That's the one that was deep in there.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. I'm looking at it right now. It's... There aren't other historic trees in this area. I think you've got a street and then lots on either side. So it's one of those situations where it could be done, you would lose some lots. It's just, it would definitely have an impact. You could work around it a little better than the other one.
Could we go to a one-lane road right there? It's only serving like seven homes back there.
So this is the one that's in this...
It hasn't loaded yet on that exhibit.
So zooming in may take a little while to load here. So, yeah, it's on the road to a cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac has about 10 lots total that are behind that. So you'd have to single-load, so it's right here. So the lots in this cul-de-sac, you'd have to jog the road on either side of it. So you'd lose probably one row of these homes, something like that.
So you can't go to, you can't go to single lane? Probably violates all kind of stuff.
You need to...
There's only nine homes beyond that, nine lots beyond that point. I mean, I see the commissioner's point. I mean, it's like right on the cusp, and it's right at the edge of the road. So it seems like we should be able to do something, but...
We really have looked at these a lot with staff and trying to measure everything to make sure we could, to try and do it. Obviously, if we, obviously, if we didn't have to ask for this, we wouldn't be doing it. But we moved those things around, and you're right, it would basically wipe out half of that cul-de-sac.
So question to Brian, they would have to mitigate this tree?
They have to, based on the total that they're removing of all trees. There's an equation of cross-sectional area that they have to replant or pay into the fund.
So we're going to get several younger, healthier trees?
We'll get many.
Many.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, this is, this is tough because we do love our trees and, you know, we hold people to a standard. The standard doesn't mean that they will never be removed. The standard means that it's not, you can't just willy-nilly go in and start removing them. You have to go through a process to be able to save, you know, the six dead or diseased. I mean, those, I've seen dead and diseased oaks that, you know, that is what it is. So to remove two healthy trees, you know, reducing lots to be able to do it, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're asking developers to do. And so... Yeah. This was approved as a PUD in 2018, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a vested right that was up to that 196. Now I get that that 196 is contingent to all the other stuff like this. So that's not a right, you know, it's not a gift from God, you got to go through all this other stuff. But the concern is, at what point does it become burdensome to the point it becomes, you know, Burt Harris taking territory? And that's, you know, I don't, is there a bright line to that, Carrie? Or is that a, it's a gray line, I imagine, right? Very gray? As gray as it can be? Yeah. I mean, we fought one of these before, a couple of years ago. We declined something for trees. It came back and they went and, you know, got mediation. You took the legal recourse as they could take, and it ended up back in our laps. And, you know, we saved a few trees, but we ultimately took down way more than this, I think, if I recall correctly. So, yeah. I think in this case, there was rights given in 2018. If I could be there for that, you know, that may be, I can't say what I would do then, but we are where we are today. And I think they've worked hard to save the ones that they've saved, so... All right, we had a motion. We had a second. We all have our feelings, but let's take a vote, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
No.
Commissioner Clodie?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank your staff for all the time they've spent making this work. And Commissioner Clodie, I understand what your thought is because I did the same thing. We've moved this around, and I will continue to try and avoid ever coming back to you again for historic trees.
All right. We'd appreciate that. Okay. Item 8B, special exception 320. City Attorney has something to read, and then we'll get into it.
Just to remind everyone, we're under the new section 2-148 that applies to this. We'll still hear from the public and take testimony, but there's no need to swear in any witness unless requested by the parties. And I see a head nod no. So just, the decision made tonight must be supported by competent substantial evidence in the record pertinent to the proceeding.
Okay. All right. We'll now proceed with this item. We'll first hear from the city, Brian.
Kelly, if you could please start with what you have there. Exhibit A, location map. This is a request for special exception approval to allow recreational vehicle and boat storage facility on a 2.9-acre parcel located on the west side of Teonia Road, about .2 miles south of Turnbull Bay Road. Property is owned I-1 light industrial. RV and boat storage is permitted as a special exception, provided A, such areas shall be secured and screened by a six-foot fence; B, no other use shall be permitted with the facility; and C, a landscape buffer area shall be required at property lines. So Kelly, if you could please go to Exhibit F, the conceptual site plan. So what she's going to pull up here shows the proposed layout of the RV and boat storage facility. And if this special exception were approved, then a site plan would be submitted for review by staff. The current process is that would be a staff-level approval of that site plan. If you could zoom out just a little bit, please. So looking at this plan, here's Teonia Road. And this is a boat and RV storage facility with a loop road in between. There's a little ditch, almost like a creek, along the back corner here. So the RV and boat storage would be between that ditch and Teonia Road. The land development regulations require a special exception to meet the following three criteria. First, the use has to be listed among the special exceptions permitted in the district that has been met. Second is, the use will not impair the character of the surrounding or adjoining district nor be detrimental to public health, morals, or welfare. Outdoor storage, properly buffered and screened per the LDR requirements, would not be detrimental to public health, morals, and welfare. The area to the south is conservation, thus will not be developed. And the other surrounding areas are also I-1 light industrial. Third criteria is most critical in this situation. It's adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, sanitation, and/or other necessary services and facilities are or will be available or provided for the proposed use. This property, in staff's opinion, does not have adequate services and facilities to support the development. The FEMA flood map shows this property almost entirely within the 100-year floodplain. And this was confirmed when we received a topographic survey that the applicant submitted to us. The nature of this use at this location is where it's basically mass clearing. It's not a lot of fill that's brought in for this. They would need to level out those parking areas, but it would still be a mass clearing that we would see. And although no buildings are proposed, there would be at least some fill in the existing natural floodplain. Compensating storage areas would therefore be required. And based on our review, it's not apparent that there is sufficient land on-site to obtain the required compensating storage volume. And not to get too technical, but that volume has to be on-site below the base flood elevation and above the seasonal high groundwater table. And with a site this low, we just don't really see that being feasible based on what we've reviewed so far. In addition, portions of the site appear to have characteristics of wetlands, mainly in the areas adjacent to that ditch that runs across the southwest part of the property. So staff is concerned about the potential impacts to the floodplain, wetlands, and the existing tree canopy. For example, the applicant provided a tree report, which identified five live oak specimen trees on-site that are noted to have been damaged from flooding and site inundation that occurred from heavy rains associated with recent major storms. And according to that report, these storms left standing water on the site for several weeks, causing root suffocation and depriving the root systems of oxygen to the trees. So to the applicant's credit, they have revised this concept plan several times. They've asked us what can they do to get support of staff, what can they produce? And although it has improved the concept plan, we feel like it doesn't fully address staff's concerns about the environmental impacts that I discussed. We feel like that due to these natural constraints at this site, a development plan that works around those constraints with maybe more limited development footprint would be recommended. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this on the January 11th meeting, and they voted by a 5 to 2 to deny the request to allow RV and boat storage. So staff has reviewed this application and determined that the subject property does not have adequate services and facilities to support the proposed special exception use as depicted on the conceptual plan. Staff recommends denial.
Okay. Would any member of the commission wish to question Brian? We're going to hear from the applicant, then we're going to hear from the public also, and then we'll discuss it. But any member of the commission have questions for Brian?
I'm going to hold my telephone after the applicant speaks. Thank you.
Commissioner Hartman?
So what we would be doing tonight would just be granting the exception. But it would still have to go before the staff, and staff would have to have the final approval on it.
That's correct. Site plan, if approved... That's correct. Site plan, if approved, would come back to staff when we reviewed against all the land development regulations.
So even if we granted them the special exception, it still may not?
That's correct. If they were unable to meet those requirements, they would not bring it forward. This is just the use tonight.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Colletti?
So they went before the planning board only with a conceptual plan?
It was just this special exception, so the same application you're seeing tonight is what they reviewed.
I'll just tell you where my concern is, is on something like this, which has obvious practical difficulties with constructing. I would like to see it come back to either the planning board or the commission to give it a real public look. I don't really have a problem with the special exceptions, kind of where Commissioner Hartman was going. But I do think it has to come back before the public for site plan approval. Can that be made a condition?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Brian, I mean, we kind of have before us two, and I know we haven't heard from the applicant yet, so I'm not presuming anything is going to happen. But we, you know, it either gets progressed forward at this point or it gets not progressed forward. Staff has recommended denied. And, you know, we often have things in front of us that are the other way, where we have things that we kind of want to deny, frankly. But yet, staff has recommended, the experts we have have recommended approval. For the right reasons, for evidentiary reasons, I'm just saying that my heart doesn't love the project, but my head says this is, you know, the property owner's rights. In this case, if we were to deny, can there be more, kind of piggyback on what my two colleagues have said? Can they, could the applicant continue to work with the staff and try to overcome this? Or is that only overcome at the, if we allow this to proceed and then go through that whole planning process? Help me understand that.
If you don't permit the use, they would not be able to submit a site plan application. So you can approve a special exception for the use subject to conditions of bringing it back to the board or any other additional conditions you'd like to add on.
Okay, but you all have recommended, my experts have recommended denial based on the gap between where we are and what it would take to get there? Or is that basically where we're at?
Yes, we feel like this use with the constraints is not a good fit for this site.
Because of the floodplain?
The floodplain, the wetland impacts.
Not being able to?
It's conceivable it could be done. I think there's that, there is that possibility. I think what they're looking for is, it's not fair to them to ask them to engineer the site for a use that's not even approved yet. So we just haven't seen enough that would indicate that this is possible here.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, we're going to hear from the applicant, but I just kind of wanted to get the line on that. Okay. All right, let's hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from the public, and then we'll, of course, have a chance to discuss all of the evidence that we've heard, so. Yes, sir.
Okay. See if I can get this right this evening. Good evening. For the record, I'm Mark Watts. I'm with the law firm of Cobb Cole. My address is 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. I'm here with the owner of the property, Bill Gogel. And also Tom DeSimone, who's the designer, the architect that's designed the site plan, that's in the materials that you're, that you're looking at this evening. I want to start, I've got a couple of things I want to walk through with you just about the site and about the location, why we think this use is permissible. And then I want to get into, you know, kind of the discussion of the level of detail that I think is going to be necessary to ultimately approve this use. But let me start with just kind of walking you through where we are and what we're talking about. So if you see the map up here, you've seen this in staff's presentation. And I do want to thank Brian and your staff because even though we've sort of agreed to disagree at the, you know, kind of this point in time, they have been constantly available and accessible and willing to work with us on, you know, kind of how to get to, yes, I think, with regard to this. So we hope that that, you know, that will continue after, after this evening. But the, the location here, we're just off of Turnbull Bay Road on Teonia. Halfway down a dead-end street with light industrial zoning. I mean, from a, from a location standpoint, this is really a good use. It's sort of tucked away. You know, I think we've heard a couple of times in the process here that, you know, some people didn't even realize that road was back there. But, you know, this is what some of the things that are on that existing road are. This is a parcel that's right actually at the corner that is RV and boat storage, that's in the county and doesn't meet your standards. So you have, in the special exception, specific standards that avoid this from being what you see. And we fully intend to meet those. We are required by your code to meet those. Further down the street, you've got other, you know, light industrial uses, you know, construction, you know, site contracting uses. And then you kind of see the parcel in the context of the roadway, you know, right across the street, I think it's Hazen, is that? Okay, manufacturing facility across the street. So this is the, the site plan that is in your materials and that's been submitted. And as, as Brian indicated, you know, this has gone back and forth through several iterations. I want to be clear about something specific right now. The approval that we're asking for this evening does not approve this site plan. Does not approve this conceptual layout. What it approves is the use. Is this use appropriate in this location? Now, the scale of that use, you know, in the last item, you were talking about a PUD that was approved for 196 lots. And when you applied your code requirements, you, you ended up with something less. And that very likely will apply here. You know, you have, we have a layout in front of you. It has not gone through review based on your tree ordinance. It has not gone through review based on your stormwater ordinance. At least not at a full engineering level of detail. Your code, your land development regulations, your comprehensive plan, all have protections and standards that apply to stormwater design, floodplain protection, compensating storage, and things of that nature. And nothing you do here this evening will exempt us from having to follow all of those code requirements to the letter. In fact, we have to satisfy your staff with that engineering as we move forward in the process from tonight. The point of it is, and it was alluded to just a minute ago, the point of it is, how much do you invest in that engineering effort before you know whether the use is permissible or not? And so we're asking for the use to, for you to consider, you know, the circumstances and conditions and location and say, yeah, you know, this use is an acceptable use here. In fact, you know, it's, again, I-1 zoning, it's listed as a special exception. What the law says with regard to special exceptions is if you can demonstrate that you satisfy the criteria, you're entitled to that use. That doesn't exempt you from the land development code and land development regulations. So you still have to meet the engineering detail. You still have to meet, you know, the, the design criteria that, that I think, you know, as Brian and I have talked about this, and I know as our client and our design professionals have spoken with staff, there is more detail necessary to confirm how much of the site you can develop this way and be consistent with your code requirements. The point is, again, we'd like to have the use considered and approved so that it's reasonable to then invest the money in that design exercise. This is more like what you would see when you apply your standards. You know, you require for the outside storage, you require that opaque fence, you require the landscaping that meets your standards. We think this is an appropriate, you know, use and appearance for that area. Again, we're not here asking in any way to be accepted from the standards that you apply. We're simply asking that you approve the use so that we can then continue investing in the design of the site to make sure that we can meet your, your code requirements. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, our, our client and our, Tom are here to answer questions if we get into anything technical.
Okay.
Good question.
Mr. McGurk?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I drive down Park Avenue and I see something that was built recently. Kind of looks like what you're proposing here. Is that similar?
On Park Avenue, yes, I believe it is.
Park Avenue and Edgewater?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd have something like that, and this is about the, I understand, this is about simply whether or not that use is appropriate for the site. So I'm probably getting a little ahead of myself, but that's essentially what you're trying to put on that property.
That's correct. This would be basically, you know, covered, covered parking spaces for RV and boat storage.
Okay. All right, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds on what the use is going to be, because I think you made a really valid point. How, how much money do you put into design when that's not even part of the discussion? You're trying to get to use.
Correct.
So if you don't get to use, we can't debate design and what it's going to look like and its impact. Because we don't know the impact, because we don't know what the exact design is going to be. Is that accurate?
That's correct. I mean, you know, this is a conceptual plan, but again, I'll state for the record, the approval tonight doesn't vest this. The approval tonight simply says you can design this. And then you have to bring that design back through the site plan process that the city, you know, requires and it has to meet all of your code requirements.
All right.
So as we were talking about the, and I don't, don't, you know, I'll take Brian's word for how you designed to compensating storage, but to have, you know, the, the fill has to be above the seasonal high water, you know, table level and everything else. Those are the details that you'll need to get into Geotech so that you can confirm where your water table is and all your grading plans and everything else. But before you know if the use is permissible, you know, it doesn't necessarily make sense to invest in that exercise.
All right, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. I have no problem with the use in that location. I think we make the argument in this town that that is the best place for these kinds of uses. I know when Taylor Storage went in, it was very controversial, you know. It's the entrance to the city on the north part of town. So with specifics, specifically to the use, I have no problem with this. That is a great location for that, provides a need. And as our codes are going to get stronger over time, we're going to need that kind of, that demand is going to be there.
Correct.
Better it be out there than sitting on US-1 or on 44. So, thank you. I have no more questions, Mayor.
Okay, other questions for the applicant? Any questions on this end from the applicant?
Nope.
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Watts, have you given any consideration to the thought of 100-year floodplains becoming strangely five-year floodplains, which can occur?
We have, and so, you know, one of the things that I think is particular about this use that makes it suitable for the property is, you know, the property is owned I-1. And so any other development of the site for manufacturing, for, for other uses, requires the construction of a building, which then you're putting a building and an inhabitable structure, you know, in a, you know, area that has been subject to some, some, you know, recent flooding. Here, you're basically building an area for vehicles to park on. They're movable. You're not putting an asset, you know, necessarily, you know, fixed assets in a location that has that issue. So I think this is really, because of those issues with regard to floodplain and coastal flooding and things of that nature, I personally think it makes this use better for the site because it allows a economically feasible use of the property without, without putting a fixed building in place that would then be subject to that flooding.
Sure, putting boats in a floodplain makes sense, right?
Noah started that trend, right?
Seriously, I would love to see more, more types of, you know, work out there. But my big problem is the statement by staff, you know, talking about flooding inundation, trees dying because of it. The additional analysis, I don't know how you can overcome it. What kind of use could you eventually have it for? But the way it stands now, I can't support it because of its elevation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I'm sorry. I can't support it now because of its elevation.
Yep. Let me ask Tom to come up and speak. We did get additional information with regard to the elevation that I think he may want to speak to. Yeah.
Go ahead. Simone, I'm an architect here in town near Somerton Beach.
Pull up Mike D.
Oh, sorry. So since our planning and zoning submitted, we did get a topographic survey of the property. Most of the site is at elevation five, which if you know about topographic information in the city, most of beachside is at four something. This is not a wetland property that flooding normally occurs on. It's actually matches, and I have a survey if you'd like to see it with some of that information. It matches pretty well with the existing topos on Teona as well, which is in the flood zone as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, the survey, you've got a very small copy of it in your staff materials. The point to that is, again, you know, the, it's new information. We didn't have it planning board. We think from a design standpoint, it's better because it shows that more of the site is closer to that, you know, that floodplain elevation that we need to design to than we previously thought. But again, that's the design exercise. And that's that next step where we're asking to at least look at the use, say this is something we, you know, we can, can move through the site plan process with.
Thank you, Mark.
Give it to the clerk, she'll pass it out. Other questions for the applicant? Yeah, she'll do it. Thank you. Did you?
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Uh, no, we got to, no, we're not, we're not there yet. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're here if you have any other questions to come up.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public anticipating that question? Randy Herman has made his way to the front.
Randy Herman, 108 Esther Street. I don't have the technical knowledge to speak to some of what was brought forward, but what concerns me is the process that we have a very skilled and dedicated planning and zoning board. And they did very deep discussion and thought process of turning this down. And our own staff, planning staff, did the same. So it does concern me that two very important bodies that we should trust in. And if the planning and zoning board actually turned them down, it would seem to me that the developer would come with new information that would, would help you make your decision. And I didn't hear anything different because of what seems to be a problem with the property, not necessarily with the idea of the use. So I just hope you consider that two very important bodies have, and I would second, if you do decide to give permission, that it has to come back to the public. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Yeah. Go ahead.
So that survey that you have in front of you now, the two areas in blue are the two portions of the site that are slightly below base flood elevation of AE5. The rest of the site is at or very close to elevation five. So we, like, we've talked about, we haven't gotten into the engineering of it yet. That's going to come after this approval. But everything we're seeing, the information that we've gotten since planning and zoning and staff has looked at it, indicates that we can meet their concerns.
Okay. Any other members of the public? All right, hearing none. Applicant, do you have responses to what you heard from the public or anything else? Then we'll come back to the city and then we'll have a discussion.
No, I think just to the one, one comment about, you know, the effort that both staff and planning board put into it. I don't disagree that everybody has put effort into it. And I think that the concerns that were raised, I think the tech, the couple of members of the planning board that had a technical or engineering background were actually the ones that voted to support it. Because I think they understood the point that, you know, the, the investment in that engineering effort really doesn't make sense until you know whether the use is going to be considered permissible. And so, you know, to, to us, it's a little bit of a cart before the horse. We, we accept that there's a challenge here with regard to the design effort. We're simply asking to, you know, to, to give us the benefit of the doubt that we can run through and satisfy staff, you know, with, with the design. Ultimately, the approval lies with, with them. And if we can't meet their technical review and satisfy them that we've complied with your, your standards, then the use won't move forward from a site plan standpoint. So, anyway, we're here, can answer any more questions if you have them.
Thank you. All right, Brian, any closing comments?
Just one clarification of the exhibit that was handed out. The, the floodplain is quite a bit more extensive than the area shaded in blue on here. The floodplain, by the topographic map, that elevation is five. You have extensive areas that are between four and five on here. So you're looking at 60 to 70 percent or more of the site is below that base flood elevation of five. So there are some areas that are higher than that that they can work with. But again, it's, it's going to be a big challenge for them to engineer this site and meet the floodplain requirements. Like I've said before, it is possible. They may need to reduce that footprint quite a bit, move some things around, but that's what they have to do.
Yeah, and, and we certainly agree with, with that, that, that we are going to have to, to respond to those details. We're going to have to prepare a grading plan that is responsive to those details and those concerns. One of the things that we noticed on the topo map, though, is if you look at the road, we're actually, you know, our elevations that are in the majority of the site we're actually, you know, our elevations that are in the majority of the site are actually consistent with the crown of the road. I believe it's on the north side or the north end. And then it actually increases as it goes, it goes to the south if I remember correctly. So there's a number of things that we need to look at as we engineer the site and engineer the grading. Again, it's just a, a question of is the use, use permissible in the location before we get into the exercise of, of designing the site.
Okay. All right. Brian, any other closing comments?
Nothing further.
So, a question for you, if I may. So I get the, kind of the challenge that we're presented with is there's, you know, how much money is spent hiring the experts to go figure out if this can work when it's not even approved as a use? So I, I get that, you know, it's, as you said, cart before the horse type thing. To use another tired cliche, I also though wonder if it's kind of square peg round hole. Like, are we, it feels like we're trying to force it, and I guess that's kind of what I'm, you know. So I agree with Commissioner McGurk. It doesn't, like, the use in this location, before I knew all this other detail, or at least before I comprehended it, I'll say, I, I may have had it in front of me, but I don't remember. I definitely didn't have the staff report in front of me at the time. The use in the location didn't bother me. Actually, I meant to, I did have one other question for you. Did you talk to, you and I talked, or the, the owners had talked about contacting the HOA down at Florida Days, which is the closest location to this residential location. Did you, were you able to make that contact?
We, we have not been able to follow up with them yet with Florida Days on that.
So I, I did talk to the, the builder in Florida Days, and just to give them a heads up, it's happening in their area. Make sure they were aware, and if they had any concerns, they actually, their comment was, hey, this is probably a needed use in that area.
Right.
Had, you know, that one individual had zero, zero issues. So it would like to have gotten the HOA feedback, but. So, yeah, at first strokes, like, rather than on Pioneer Trail or other places where we have been putting these, you know, this location doesn't bother me. But if the location doesn't work, so I guess my question for you, Brian, that was a long-winded way to get to a question. If this had come in, I mean, I, you know, this costs money for somebody to design. If this had been designed with, instead of forty-seven, with twelve spaces, kind of right down the middle of the high points, would that had, would that have changed staff's recommendation? Meaning is knowing that their target is basically every square foot of the property from what I can see, is that part of what's driving the no recommendation? And if they'd come in and said, look, we just really want to put twelve right down the middle, they're going to be premium spots, might staff had said, yeah, we think that's close enough that it's worth kind of the, how does that work?
That would certainly help if it was a reduced footprint. It would give them more flexibility to build in stormwater, work around some of the lowest areas of the site to leave that be and have that compensating storage. I think, it's hard to say without seeing it, but it would give us more confidence that this is possible. I think that, it's the, the, the use and the nature of it with kind of just the mass clearing, that, that field of storage not being a good fit for the constraints here with that, that number of units.
Yeah. Okay, so that would have changed the, the calculus, if you will, behind this. And so, really the disconnect is from, you know, we didn't tell them what number to, you know, we didn't tell them how to design this, but this is the starting point. And so, yes, maybe we could get there, but we're starting so far apart from what staff's, you know, our experts believe is possible on that lot, on that lot, and meeting all of our other LDRs and every, all the other requirements versus what we've got in front of us is just a bridge too far to use yet a third tired cliche. Okay. All right, I, I actually saw his hand up.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And then I'll come to you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Whenever you have a special exception like this, especially on a project that does require a lot of engineering and environmental, it's important to get this question answered first before the applicant is subjected to a lot of engineering costs. I have no problem with the basic idea that this be used for vehicle storage. I would like to see it come back before the Planning Board for approval, for public, another public display. Also let the Planning Board see all the information that they weren't allowed to see to begin with because it didn't exist. So I would make a motion to that order, but I would also like to say because of the conditions out there, it would be almost impossible to put a building on this site at all. So this might be a way for the applicant to recoup some, some money, make some profit, and still add something to, to the city.
Yeah, let me just be clear, I heard you use the word motion, but were you making a motion or were you saying you would make a motion?
I will make a motion and I'll do that now.
All right, if you would please, just so we have clarity.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special exception use and that site plan approval return to the Planning Board for their review and approval. Other than just the staff, because the public does have interest in it.
All right, just, just keep the motion going. All right, so approval with it going to the planning for review. Do you wish to second that motion?
Second for discussion.
All right, and it's coming to you next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just can't get past that what we're doing is allowing the use, and I think that's what the motion maker alluded to. I understand staff's concern, but I'm concerned we're putting the cart before the horse by denying it. And number three of the special exception, the invite, the concerns you have, the environmental, the impact, we're not sure what that is yet until they create a site plan and work with staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I don't want to beat this thing up. I think that I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this because what they're requesting is reasonable, and we can't determine what the impact is until we see a site plan. So, and as the motion maker said, you want to come back before the Planning Board or the Commission?
He said Planning Board. And you seconded it.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mayor. That's all my comments.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Not, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Colletti?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sax?
Hello.
Mayor Owen.
I'm a no. Thank you all. Good luck. All right, next item up is item. Where are we at?
Ordinances on first reading.
Yes, all right. This is your Tom to shine, Carrie, go for it, nine A.
Ordinance number eleven twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, Article six, section six oh four oh nine, off-street parking, loading and driveways, to add regulations pertaining to public parking lots, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number twelve twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article eight supplementary regulations, section eight oh three oh four, regulations pertaining to boats, boat docks and boat docks with terminal platforms, covered boat slips, boat houses, mooring poles and other boat storage and docking facilities, to revise the maximum footprint for single-family dock structures, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number thirteen twenty-one, an ordinance annexing into the City of New Smyrna Beach two point six plus or minus acres of property located east of Corbin Park Road, south of Swoop Drive, addressed as twenty-one hundred Swoop Drive, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within commission zone four, providing for public hearing, provided for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective, effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number fourteen twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of two point six plus or minus acres of land located east of Corbin Park Road, south of Swoop Drive, addressed as twenty-one hundred Swoop Drive from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity and Environmental Systems Corridor to City Low Density Residential and Conservation, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach rezoning two point six plus or minus acres of property located east of Corbin Park Road, south of Swoop Drive, addressed as twenty-one hundred Swoop Drive from Volusia County R four A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay. It's a city R two A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay Zoning District, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number sixteen twenty-one, an ordinance annexing into the City of New Smyrna Beach point three plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Davis Drive between Bolton Road and Corbin Park Road, addressed as two two seven one Davis Drive, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within commission zone four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance number seventeen twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point three plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of Davis Drive between Bolton Road and Corbin Park Road, addressed as two two seven one Davis Road from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to City Low Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance eighteen twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point three plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Davis Drive between Bolton Road and Corbin Park Road, addressed as two two seven one Davis Drive from Volusia County R four A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R two A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay Zoning District, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, good job. So we're at ordinance number eighteen this year so far. Last year we had one twenty, so a hundred more to go, gentlemen. I think we're on good pace. All right, next item is boards and commissions. Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hartman, get ready. You've got a couple of resign, you've got a couple of appointments to make. This is for the Neighborhood Council. We had Deborah Bell and Elizabeth Bell that resigned. So to accept a motion to accept, accept the resignation of those two individuals from that board.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
City clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carrie, can we confirm at some point, I keep just keep forgetting to ask, do we have to make a motion and accept resignations? Like, we don't have a choice, they're resigning, like, what are we going to do? Make them, I mean, what's the recourse?
So I have never had to answer that question.
Yeah, I'm not saying answer it right now, I'm just saying, we'll look at it, we can save ourselves a few seconds.
Let's not accept it and see what happens.
I know, that's what I'm saying, like, chief's just going to go drag them to the meeting? They didn't accept your resignation, you got to be there.
All right, Vice Mayor Sax, you have a nomination for zone two to make?
Yes.
Please let us know who you nominated.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Sandra Savinsky.
Sandra Savinsky?
I think she's well qualified.
Good, glad to hear that. Nomination for zone two, Sandra Savinsky, City Clerk, any issues, all that, that's good, okay. Mr. Hartman, if you would announce your nomination for zone four.
Nominate Timothy Washington.
Washington, Tim Washington, all right. City Clerk, all good with that nomination? Okay. And since these are nomin, these are, these are kind of appointments or the nominations, do I need to?
Yeah, you're right.
Do I need to make a motion on these, or do I need a motion, Carrie? No, all right, I'm seeing no's. So we, so we have to have a motion for him to get off, but not to get on. That doesn't make sense, all right. Item ten B, thank you both, and thank you, those citizens that are willing to serve. They will serve three-year terms to expire on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And I know our Chair of that, Randy Herman, will make them feel welcome. You are still the Chair, right? Yeah, okay. All right, item ten B is the resignation of Dr. Tripp, who is the Chair of the Turnbull Preservation Committee. She served us well, but due to her business she's trying to run and the timing of the meeting, she was not able to continue to serve, which is a loss for us. So do I have a motion to accept her resignation?
Second.
Second.
City clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
They seconded, who made it? Commissioner Hart, oh, you made it. Commissioner McGurk made it, we'll take Vice Mayor's second. Go ahead.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for my appointment to that, I am, would like to appoint Robert Westner, who was the sole applicant that I have here, but in reviewing his application, was really, really impressed. Didn't have a chance to speak to him, but was, was really impressed. He's been involved with MDC, Turnbull Way cleanups, Burn SciTech, worked at the Army Corps, St. John's, et cetera. So seemed well qualified and excited for him to be able to step up and serve on that commission.
How does the chairmanship work?
I was, literally, you took the words out of my mouth.
Sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna note that I believe they would, they select that, they, they appointed her. So I'm not nominating him as Chair, I'm just putting him on the commission, and they will select a Chair, which they may have already done, I don't know.
At their upcoming meeting, which is on the twenty-ninth, they'll be selecting a Chair.
Okay, just make it, make sure they understand that my nominee is not the Chair. My nominee is just a nominee and they select the Chair.
Yes, understood.
All right, that term will expire February first, twenty twenty-two. Next up, Mayor and Commission reports, we'll begin with the Vice Mayor as always.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to mention the Riverside Drive Garden Coalition. I think it's a very nice thing to do. It gives us all a sense of place and a wonderful town is, is just a showcase. And it's a good example for the rest of the city if anybody wants to come forward and have either the signs that, you know, the Neighborhood Watch or whatever they would like to name their, their part of town, just to give it an identity. I think there are, I don't know if it's twenty-four or somewhat, somehow we came to that amount. But if people have, like, South Mainland, we have now, the North Mainland area is the Riverside Garden. But I, I want to thank them for their hard work and thanks to the city for helping them out. I appreciate that. Chief Coffin, I want to thank you for putting your thumb on the
Calling Hannah.
young folks that partied over the last weekend. It could have turned into a melee, thank goodness, I think most of them were peaceful. I'm concerned while I'm there wearing a mask and none of the kids were, so hopefully we won't have a spreader event. For, for my constituents, for our constituents that listen to us, look, I, I am concerned about the future of our city, not because of its growth, but because of its popularity. We're, you know, the, the mainland is growing, Orlando's growing, and we're going to become like the next Miami Beach and, God forbid, Daytona. No, no offense to Daytona, but they've had their problems with visiting spring breakers. Some say it's not spring breakers down south, but thank God we haven't had to deploy El Rad or first peppered stuff. And that, that was just an ugly scene. I hope our kids have more sense than that. But we, you know, when I look at the social media, which is my only source of getting information except for direct contact, it seems like the, the beachside residents, as well as forty-four area residents, are overwhelmed. We cannot help that, it's none of our fault. We're just, we've got a nice beach, county's got a good beach, and they want to bring everybody over here. And it gets crazy, and they, they act poorly. And I don't, until the chief can double his force, can we ever get the help? I still would like to see help from the Sheriff's Office. It's their beach, they need to help us out a little more if they can. And I'll leave that alone, it's, but, but I'm concerned for the safety of, of our residents during those peak times when they worry that a fire engine can't get to them. That's why I'm going to push forward in the next budget cycle for the additional light at Station fifty-two. Also on a nice note, these are things I, I like to, to get involved with, and that's this friendship agreement. We, we have a sister city called Nea Smirnie. And the ambassador from Greece, who, who resides in Tampa now, made contact with me. It's been a long while, but we both had our challenges, our cities had COVID, and Greece really struggled. But he mentioned that Greece became a free country now after two hundred years after being enslaved by the Ottoman Empire. They are now free. And the rest of the world is joining them in their celebration. They're very proud of it. I spoke to Dimitri, and he said, basically, he would love to see us do something to honor them. And as their and as their sister city, which I'm very proud that we did that for them, after all, they're, they're our namesake, New Smyrna. Could we light up something in blue and white? If not the municipal, our, our, our city hall, possibly the Ahepa monument over here at Riverside Park. But let's do something to honor them, because they really want to be good sister citizens. I would like us to be too, but I did tell him, at this time, we can only offer our friendship. But, Colin, I, I would ask you, whatever you can do, it would be greatly appreciated.
I received the ma- the email from the mayor, as well as I talked to you on the phone.
Yes, thank you.
We are ready, if the commission wishes to do that, we are ready to put a, a blue light at the Greek monument in Riverside Park.
So, any?
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Gentlemen, would you like to do that? Do we need a consensus?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, any objections to doing that in, in spirit of camaraderie, or sister city, in that, that big anniversary they're celebrating, lighting up that monument? All right, hearing no objections, good to go, thank you.
Thank you, Colin, thank you, man. That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner, you, whatever your name, McGurk.
I just want to say for the record, that technical difficulty you had, I'm glad that happened to you, not me. It would be something that would happen to us, to you.
Yeah.
Nice, I love it, I love it.
That one, you mean?
Yes. I don't have anything to say other than the challenges the chief is dealing with. This, you know, the city manager, these kids, I don't think we're a spring break destination. May or may not be an isolated incident, certainly the springtime, this pops up. Every spring, we have this overload and influx of people, and it just is burdensome. It's not going away, every year it happens, and the more we can just plan for it in the future, I think, the better off we are. That's all I have to say, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
So I'd like, I'd like to bring up an area concern that we have out in Venetian Bay, and it's Costello Road. It's just north of where the apartments are over there, and they're parking on both sides of the street. The, I've spoken to the Homeowners Association, and also the Master HOA over there, and both of them would like and would support putting no parking signs on the north side of Costello. Now, one of the issues over there that's particular, peculiar about this is Lunabella runs perpendicular to Costello, and that's actually a private road, we have no control over that. Costello is the only city-maintained road that goes on the north side of those apartments. There's some concerns, as Commissioner Sacks knows, about fire apparatus getting in and out, and when they start double parking on both sides of the street. So if I could get a consensus that maybe we could bring this up at a later, later time, on a later agenda, maybe get some input from staff on what would be the best way to try to mitigate that, whether it's the no parking sign, or maybe a yellow curb, or something along that lines.
Any objections, having this added to a future agenda for staff to discuss, hearing none?
Okay, on the lighter side, I was at Bay James on Thursday when they were handing out the virus, the vaccines, and I tell you, I really appreciate everything that staff did. It was really well organized, including the Rotary, Volusia County, both Health Department and also other emergency management people were there. You saw a lot of smiling faces going in and out of that place during that time. So hats off to everybody that was involved in that. And then on Friday, we had summer splash out there. I, I have to tell you, there's a young lady out there that has an arm. Two out of three times, she put the mayor in the dunk tank.
I was gonna ask how many kind of eyes.
She even got the chief once, so. So where they shared, they didn't share, but, you know, not together, but both of them did time in the dunk tank. But that young lady, they, high schools need to start looking out for her, because she had an arm, and there was no wind-up or anything, she just flat-out threw that ball. So I appreciate you guys for all that you did, also want to thank the realtors for all that they did. They, you know, supplied a lot of the food, and, and helped with the cooking and stuff like that. So staff was also, I mean, the kids actually had a wonderful time. And actually got to see the splash park in use, so it was a great time. Fortunately, it was Friday and not Saturday, because I think you guys would have been freezing on Saturday.
And Commissioner Hartman served as chef that day, and, and served us up some delicious burgers and hot dogs, so thank you for your, for your time there as well. Commissioner Cloddy, was that, I'm sorry, did that?
That's it, yep.
Commissioner Cloddy.
I too have to thank the chief for putting together a good plan for, for how we handle the beachside traffic. The, there was more presence out there, patrolling the neighborhood, some good traffic control. And for the first time since I've been, I've been Commissioner, I got more positive calls from the people who live there than the people who don't like the way things are being handled. So they, they liked our presence out there. Obviously, that's not gonna solve all the problems, but if it's a problem solved, the way people look at it, it's a problem solved. We've had any number of issues come up regarding parking. We have in our strategic plan that we want to look in land development requirements. I would like to see the staff come forth with a, a proposal to hire a consultant to look at these parking issues, because more and more, we're seeing what our ordinances are doing to make parking situations worse in any number of areas. So I hope the commission would support that request.
Okay, any concerns?
Just a statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
The parking issue in the community, I'm all for getting into that, but it is a big encompassing issue. I don't want to just toss this on an agenda like it's a brief discussion. It's something that I think should be isolated, and maybe even workshop, but I want to make sure, because, I mean, I can't agree with you more, and I would love to get into this discussion. I just don't want to spend enough time to take up staff's time, but not necessarily come up with a so, an overall solution, so I, I'm concerned about that.
It was, it was on the, the bullet points, it was one of the bullet points on our presentation from our, our staff.
Understand.
We've talked about this for a year, really haven't done much, other than loading zones. We really gotta do it, we can't just keep putting it off. There are any number of applications that are coming up, that we're gonna have to deal with. We won't even be able to correct or change our ordinances by then, but we gotta get started. It's not staff time, it's hiring a consultant, something I'm not normally in favor of, but we really have to do it. It's budgeted, it's a parking issue, we have the funds for it, we have the guidance to do it, we have it in the strategic plan. Let's just do it, it's time to do it.
I think we can accomplish more than hiring a parking expert, but that's my feelings.
I have, I have no problem, so, I don't think y'all are far apart, and I'm probably kind of right in the middle. So, yeah, I don't want to just talk about it anymore, we, we've talked about parking ad nauseam, and yet, you know, we've done a few things. So, but, if we go hire a consultant, what is that scope of work? Like, is it from, you know, boundary to boundary, is it Canal Street, is it Flagler, is it beach, is it off-beach? Is it solving the issues we just talked about with the restaurant? Like, that's what I feel like, I think, we benefit from, and I, I'm kind of workshopped, we, we probably hit our limit on workshops, but I think that that's what is probably worthy of a discussion, to help figure out, can we, do we, do we want to bring in a consultant to help on some of these issues? And then what other issues might we tackle, you know, external to that, or internal to that? So that, that's where I'm saying is, parking is an overarching thing, and we have issues. We just heard about an issue on Riverside. Traditionally, when we've talked parking, we've talked Flagler and kind of beachfront, so that's, that's my, that's what I would need more clarity on before we just go out and hire a consultant.
We're not, this doesn't go towards solving our parking problems. It goes towards solving the problem of making them worse, because our own ordinances, some of which were passed when times were bad.
Right.
We give parking reductions in certain districts. We allow people to put in a hundred and fifty-seat restaurants.
So it's reviews of the LDRs?
So it's review the LDRs? Yes.
I got you, okay, so it's not looking at, like, off-beach parking, Flagler parking, like, existing state, and deficit, all those?
Correct, that's a separate issue.
Got it, so you're just talking about reviewing the LDRs to say, what should, what changes might we make to make sure we're not continuing to propagate this problem?
Exactly. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
And I think it's impossible to do that, and I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. It's impossible to deal with this without affecting that. So you're gonna change your ordinances, which some will interpret are making it worse, and it may very well be. As soon as you change that ordinance, I'm gonna tell you right now, let me give you a brief example. If you want to roll back parking exceptions on Flagler Avenue, then none of the restaurants can be there, because none of them have onsite parking. So how, so my, my, my point is, we're gonna get down a road where, where you got public spaces, how, how are you counting them? Some people have vested rights in them, it, it snowballs into a huge discussion. So I, I just don't know how we keep this small.
I'm willing to have it, I don't think it is a small issue, but I think it has to be addressed.
Yeah.
It's, it's intrinsic in our ordinances. We can't make it worse, and we're making it worse every time we approve something without adequate parking.
So maybe as a, as a, I, I think we all want to get somewhere, but I, I hear this concern. Maybe we ask staff to come back to us, either on agenda, or even just individually off-agenda, and let us know, you know, what, what do you recommend as the next step? Is it that we all meet to try to define some scopes of problem, and talk about these concerns? Is it, you know, hey, we know there's consultants that focus, you know, I think helping us understand, here's a way that we can break down this problem, and the different ways we might attack it, where we need help, where we as staff or commission need, need help, is that, do you think that would be? I, I think, I'm not comfortable skipping.
I prefer to move it quicker, but that's a step we could take.
I'm with you, but I, I don't know, I worry about, again, what does that description of services for that consultant say? Like, I, I need to understand that before I go.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I asked for.
Well, listen, I, I've had some casual conversations with staff that lead me to believe they get it. And with us talking with them, we can make some serious headway.
Yeah.
So I'm not in for spending studies and experts, that almost never goes anywhere. We spend a lot of money, a lot of time, and then we go and realize that our city is a little different, and our circumstances are a little unique. I'm, I, I want to engage you guys, I think we can figure this out with staff, more than an expert.
Okay, let, let's have staff, I don't want to get hung up on this, so let's have staff come back and.
What's, what Commissioner Cloddy was, was referring to is what was in the strategic plan that came out of the input from the commission and the residents as far as the parking issues. He's referring to the land development regulations, regulations requirement for parking. For example, like, you know, in the, back in the mid-eighties and the nineties, they reduced the parking spaces for businesses on Flagler. So my idea is, if we can get a consultant and say, okay, these are the issues we have. We have an LDR requirement right now, this is where it is. Here are the problem in the parking issue on Flagler and Canal, I mean, these are the two areas that we have a problem with. And see what we could come up with suggestion, do we need to make changes into the LDR? And if, if we need to, what are they? And then the other hand, to look at the parking overall, and see what other improvements we could do in terms of providing parking. So that's, that's my, my input into that one. But mainly, the first step into it is to get the consultant to look at the LDR, and see if there's anything we need to do in terms of the businesses. Because as Commissioner McGurk mentioned, there is some that are grandfathered in. So it'd be a problem if, if somebody moves out of the business today, and then you say, well, you need to provide the parking, there's no way they could provide it.
Without buying adjoining businesses, and the only people who can do that are deep pockets, and so now we franchised our downtowns.
Well, then we're taking buildings down to provide parking lots.
Exactly.
And, and the property's too expensive unless the area becomes blighted.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So we can get a, we can get a proposal with a scope for you, and then you guys look at it, and, and see if that's something within the guidelines that you're thinking of? And if there is, then we'll go forward, if not, we could, we could modify it, and, and, but we gotta do something. I mean, there is no, no question about it, we gotta do something.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want to hire, I don't want to, I don't want to hire a consultant to then get to the end that says, you should do X, Y, and/or Z, and then we find out that this leadership body doesn't have the, the, you know, the will to pursue any of those changes. Because there's gonna be people, fill up this chamber, that are for and against anything that is out there. If it's parking meters, if it's a parking garage, if it's changing LDRs, if it's not changing LDRs. And so if we're gonna wither under that pressure and do nothing, then let's not hire the consultant. So I'm saying, before we go there, I'd like for us to have a real deep internal conversation about, would you support a parking garage? Let's get some, let's get some commitment on the table before we invest the money, is all I'm saying. Because I know where my border, I know where I stand on some of these, but I feel like we, we dip our toe in the water, and then the minute the public comes out, then we, we quickly just say, I don't know, and let's just, let's just punt that one down the can.
And initially, when, when I talked to Commissioner Cloddy, in the strategic plan, we have workshops for the commission that you guys want to have an open discussion. So one of the items we're gonna actually put on the table to discuss is the parking issue. So if you want, you could discuss it at that time.
Okay.
And if you have the will to do that, then we could move into the consultant.
What, do you have any idea when that works, have we scheduled those workshops, or?
When is it, in April?
I sent it out, if you'd just give me one moment, I can look at it.
All right.
I'll get you the date.
So I'd sug- if we've got that coming up as soon as April, I would support, let's have that conversation, and we can get, I want to do something, I want to take action, but let's get that conversation, and from that, we'll get to this action.
I agree with that, and specifically because I think the last time we had one of these visiting, we actually accomplished a lot, we had some good discussion, we got things done, so I, I think that's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just weigh in quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Our biggest problem is looking for land to buy for parking, correct? I mean, right, that's, that's the problem.
I mean, if, if the, I mean, there have been some, I think you have made this case on, on, in other cases with boat parking, et cetera, there's this concept of, if you build it, they will come. So there's some that say, don't add any parking, and eventually our problems will not get any bigger. So that's a philosophical debate we have to start with. If we decide that the solution is more parking, then yes, that becomes an next challenge, is where do you put it?
Right, so I don't want to inadvertently put it where the county can park cars for their beach. That's my big concern, I, I'm on board with all of this, trying, trying to, I would rather not spend forty thousand dollars on a study, use our staff, who willingly works very hard for us, and, and conversations between ourselves, if we can get any kind of ball rolling. Question quickly, if Randy Herman might remember, did the beachside task force have a parking study? Yes, so could we maybe even pull that out, out of the, the bin, and, sorry, I don't mean to.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, we didn't take any recommendations, I don't think.
I think on this issue, and I'm about to turn it back to be Commissioner Cloddy's time, you know, on this issue, the issue, the challenge has not been lack of possible solutions. The challenge has been lack of willingness to execute those in the, in the face of public objection to things being different. There's two things people don't like, the way things are, and change. And this issue lines up square right in the middle of that. So that's the fundamental issue, and that's where I think the workshop is important, that we all look each other in the eye and say, we're gonna tackle this issue in this way, or we're gonna shy away from it, as has been done in the past. And then, then we move forward based on whatever we decide in, in that realm. And that way, we give the consultant guidance to say, you know, this is off the table, there's just not the support. So don't come back to us and tell us we need to add a ten-story parking garage, because that's not happening. Or, this is on the table, so put it in your, put it in the rolodex of options. I get that you're talking about just this LDR thing, though, so that, that is certainly an element of this, but I think we have to talk about the whole thing. It's your time.
As long as we're moving ahead, I'm happy.
All right, we're moving ahead.
They just like us to move ahead a little quicker.
What's that date?
Also.
That workshop will be Thursday, April fifteenth, from one to five P.M. here at the Brandon.
The old tax day, we're gonna have a workshop on parking.
I'm not available.
I'm not done yet.
All right, we'll, we'll get this scheduled in a minute, go ahead, you're, still your time.
I think we all need to be commended for the work we've done since the first day the word COVID was announced. Because we worked very hard, we worked very good, we didn't lay anybody off, we curtailed a lot of functions when we had to curtail them, we helped out. helped out with public health, and now we're about to be sort of rewarded. We're getting a big boatload of cash to correct all the deficiencies. We really didn't have that much of. So I would like to see all of us, once we get a direction from our manager as to where this money can go and how we can make best use of it, how we can make some of the things we've taken away, we can make them whole again, how we can keep down our costs for coming into the next budget year. Just one example I look at, I don't even know if it's possible. We're talking about borrowing $5 million for a short-term loan. Can the money be used to supplant that and save us some money in that regard? So that's just one example. I've said my piece, and I hope we all think about that, because I hate to see the money just go to something we don't really have to do it on. And this way, we have plenty of time to think about it ahead of time. Thank you.
All right. I think that's everyone. I have two things. Number one, actually, three things. So I did want to thank staff. It was a great event at the Babe James for Powell. For those of you that weren't there, I went first in the dunk tank and was dunked numerous times, but I have to say, they were really just kind of dialing it in with me. And then Chief got up in full uniform, minus obviously the accessories and everything else, but which I thought was exactly the image that we really wanted in today's time. But got up, and I took the liberty, I'm sure you all will be fine with this, I took the liberty of adding some ice to the water right as he got up. I didn't feel like it was, it was getting a little warmed up, so I wanted to make sure he got the nice refreshing experience that I had. So, and then they really had dialed it in by the time Chief got up. Every time I looked over, the guy was going in the water, and they really had, they'd gotten it. So, but it was a great event. We had a good time to spend with the, with the children out there, numerous different wet and dry activities they could take in. They brought in these big giant inflatable slides and everything. So really, really good event done by, by the staff, Officer Washington, many others who were involved. Itchy, I think, was a part of it, I believe. So numerous, numerous good work by the team. So thank you for that.
Mayor, he even had some of his staff throw, whereas you had none of us there.
So I gave you the chance to throw. I had other staff that threw at me, too. Nobody dunked me, but I had other staff.
I think that was some of his staff that dunked me.
Yeah, it was, yeah. No, he did. You had a couple of officers throw, and they should definitely not quit being officers. There's no Major League Baseball experience in future for those folks. Yeah. If, never, I won't make the comment. If they pull their taser like they throw a baseball, we're in trouble. Okay. Spring break, most of us saw the social media post, the outcry on, I guess that was probably Mondays when that kind of initially happened, things escalated. That was interesting. I talked to some staff at Breakers. A gentleman said he'd worked there 25, 30 years, two different gentlemen, both of them been there, you know, decades. So they'd never seen anything like this in their, in their time there. And so I spent time the next two nights, because I'm a, I got to see it. I'm just that dumb. So I just got to put my eyes on it to understand it, because you hear stuff on social media, and you think the sky is falling. And so I wanted to just witness it. So the next two nights, I just parked down there and kind of observed from a distance, and, and I talked to a lot of these visitors, and it was 16, 17-year-old kids that had gotten checked into hotels by their parents and left on our beach. So we became babysitter number one. You know, the kids are just being kids. 95, 97% of them are good kids, respectful, not trying to do us or our town any damage, just trying to have a good time. Had a lot of questions for the parents, but the kids are just being kids. I thought after the first night, when we really had no clue what was kind of descending upon us, the next two nights after that, really, really dialed in the response on how to handle that, how to go into crowd control mode. And, you know, I spent time walking through and driving through the surrounding areas, the neighborhoods, and really thought the increased police presence did a really good job of keeping the crowd controlled, keeping the issues down, and keeping it really to that fringe element of troublemakers, and then we dealt with them, you know, as we, as we could. So, and then we caught a break with some weather towards the back end of the week, which I'm sure every officer was thankful for. So really just wanted to commend the team. We've all seen the videos out of beaches to the south. You know, it was nothing like that, although if you just see one 10-second clip, it will make you think that. I'm telling you, I stood there, I watched it, I talked to folks. It wasn't like what you saw out of Miami Beach. And hopefully, we never get there. That's not, no one's trying to market this. The Visitors Bureau didn't invite this in. Like, we, nobody invited this. It happened. It came upon us. We dealt with it. What was interesting, though, is that crowd, like, they had nowhere to go. I mean, after 10 o'clock at night, when you're under age, you got nowhere to go. So the spring break crowd that shows up from a college, you know, they're in traders or break, you know, they're in somewhere. This crowd had nowhere to go. So we became their babysitter. So, but the team did a really good job. The last thing I wanted to share is, I'll get the link and send to you all, but I attended a low-impact development workshop that was put on by, I forget the group, but really, really good workshop, actually, with some really practical ideas about some things that can be done, and some eye-opening things for me. For instance, one thing was, I learned, and Commissioner, you probably already knew this, but I hadn't picked up on it, is recharge areas. We often think of the recharge area as wetland, and the experts on that call were saying recharge areas, wetlands aren't good recharge areas, because it's so close to the aquifer, it doesn't have time to go through. So the recharge area is the upland area, where it can really filter through the soil, et cetera. So it was just some things where they talked about, you know, the use of pavers versus, you know, concrete for driveways and what other communities have done. So there were certainly some ideas that I wanted to rattle around at staff level and say, are there, are there any tangible, practical things we can continue to enhance our LDRs with, not to make development unattainable, but to make it sustainable? And so that's the, that's the question. So I don't know if anybody else had a chance to attend that. I don't remember seeing any names on there, but were you on it? Okay. So I enjoyed it. I encourage each of you to take a listen if you can find that, find that link, but especially somebody on your team, Brian, I think, could get some value from it. So, and that was all that I had. City manager.
Just a few things. I think you have the report, but I just want to bring up the American Rescue Plan Acts that.
Talk into the mic. Talk into the mic, Cole. Having trouble here.
Right now, it's unclear exactly the details on the plan, but it looks like we will be getting close to $11 million. There is four categories to the plan, but what could you spend it on, even within the category, it's unclear at this point. So we will be getting quite a bit of questions, hopefully to the county and also to the states. I know the finance director, they're having a meeting tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get some more clear directions. Tomorrow, we have a manager's meeting at noon. Brian will attend for me. I'm going to be off tomorrow. But anyway, I'm going to create a small team from department heads, trying to come up with some ideas. When we find out, you know, what are exactly we could spend it on, so this will be prepared to present some options to the commission. What I know is we cannot spend it on roads. However, we have two bridges, you know, and then they said that you could spend it on water and sewer. So the question that I asked at the time, and they didn't have the answer for, what happened to the utilities? Some of the other cities, the utilities is part of the city. We have a separate utility. So do the utilities get some of this money as well? So some of these questions that we probably will ask and see if we can get some clear directions from the county and some other agencies as well. So as soon as we have a clear idea, we'll present back to the commission. The other thing is, one of the items I want to bring into the city manager report, as you know, the contract with Waste Pro is going to expire on September 30th. I have talked to the commissioners individually to renegotiate with Waste Pro, but I didn't take it to the commission officially. So this is my official request from the commission to authorize staff to renegotiate with Waste Pro. Obviously, after the negotiation, we had to come back to the commission. Also, today, they signed, we just, in case of precautionary measure, to extend the contract for six months after the September. Just in case if we don't come up to an agreement, I have that, that time to put it out to bid, and also to transition time for the new contractor, if it's a new contractor. So the extension for six months with no increase at all. Initially, they wanted to have a 3% and 7% on the recycling, but today they agreed to do that. So hopefully, on April 8th, we'll be having our first public negotiation session with them. So, any questions on the, the CM report is, it's still explanatory. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, I was about to say, let's pause on that one issue real quick.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion on that?
I would, I would like to have a motion on authorizing the staff, please.
Make a motion to allow staff to enter negotiations with Waste Pro on the solid waste contract.
On a motion, I had a second, city clerk.
Commissioner Colodi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the CM?
So the motion was for the solid waste. There's also a recycling, which can be two meetings, but we would need a separate motion for the recycling as well.
That raises a good point. Collid, will we be discussing what they, what Waste Pro would be doing? Because recycling now is a hot-button topic, and if they could address that concern for us as well? And if we have to pay, what, what will they do with recycling?
It depends on the negotiation, so.
Okay.
Make a motion to allow staff to enter negotiations with Waste Pro on the recycling contract.
Second.
I heard Vice Mayor second. Commissioner Hartman, dear Lord, made him the mayor now. I don't know what's going on up here. Commissioner Hartman made the motion, or the Vice Mayor second, city clerk.
Commissioner Colodi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll be off tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. Brian is here, so if you have any questions, I'll be looking at my emails and phones as well, but not too often, I hope. Enjoy your time away. Brian is more than capable.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager? If not, city attorney, sorry, clerk?
Yes, just briefly, I've worked with Carrie, just to let you know, we streamed, we went through and streamlined all of the board terms and limits. So that part is done. I'll bring a report at the next meeting, see that you can see the finished product.
Excellent. Thank you. City attorney report.
Some of you know, but for the benefit of the public, last Wednesday, the applicant representative for the borrow pit did file a petition for cert. So that's, they have alleged that there's no competent substantial evidence to support the commission's denial of the borrow pit along State Road 44. The court quickly issued the order to show cause, which means they're asking the city, why shouldn't we grant this petition? So I will keep you apprised of that as that develops, but just to let you know that we'll be back in front of you in one form or another, and so, just so everyone's aware.
So, quick question on that. So they've asked us to show call, so we have to give some kind of a response based on what you all heard. So you and Brian will work together in Collid, and then the potential outcomes from like a decision tree, if they, can the court, can the court quash it? I know they can quash it, and it would come back to us as it has in the past, or they could pursue other legal action. Could the court quash it, for lack of a term, the other way and say, no, you don't have a case, or is it destined to come back to us?
So the court, once we file our response, they will get an opportunity to reply to our response.
Okay.
The court will read it all, and they could determine that there's competent substantial evidence to support the denial. That is an option.
Okay.
But if they say there is no competent substantial evidence to support the denial, the decision is quashed, it's back here, and will either be reheard or serve as the basis for an additional lawsuit.
Yeah, got it. But if it, if the court sides with us, then it wouldn't come back to us?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that report. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.